Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the September 14, 2023 work session for the Henrico County School Board. Board members, the first item on our agenda this afternoon is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda's been approved. The next item is our closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session, colleagues?
I move that we, the school board, go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific school board employees, and the request for a religious exemption from compulsory attendance that would involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic records concerning individual students.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Ogburn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Now for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session, and we'll reconvene this work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Good afternoon and welcome back to the September 14, 2023 work session of your Henrico School Board. Board members, the next item on our agenda is the certification of closed session. May I have a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best each school board member's knowledge only, public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorized in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has now been certified. And the next item is actually items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, good afternoon. For the first item, I am recommending the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student cases numbered 23-24-re-3, also 23-24-re-4, also 23-24-re-5, and finally 23-24-re-6, based on bona fide religious beliefs.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. May I have a motion, please, board members?
I move that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student cases numbered 23-24-re-3, 23-24-re-4, 23-24-re-5, and 23-24-re-6.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The requests are approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending approval of personnel actions, including hires, changes in assignments, promotions, and separations.
Board members, may I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogburn. I mean, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The personnel actions are approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve proposed revisions to policy P6-03-003 Residence. And as you'll recall from previous review and discussion on this policy change, this brings Henrico County Public Schools into alignment with new state law effective July 1, 2023 pursuant to House Bill 1929.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Board members, if you don't have any questions or comments, may I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the proposed revisions to policy P6-03-003 Residence.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The proposed revisions are approved.
Thank you. Next, recommending approval of proposed revisions to policy P9-09-001 Purchasing Authority. And similarly, this is in alignment with new state law effective July 1 pursuant to House Bill 1822.
Board members, if you don't have any outstanding questions or comments, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the school board approve the proposed revisions to policy P9-09-001 Purchasing Authority.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The proposed revisions are now approved.
Thank you. Next, she'll note that there are a number of policies coming for first review related to leave, and this is part of a comprehensive review of all of our policies and regulations, and particularly bringing forward leave-related policies. The first one for review are proposed revisions to policy P4-08-001 Sick Leave. And again, the changes to this particular policy are technical edits.
Board members, does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Dr. Cashwell, next item.
Okay. Also, with some technical edits is a policy P4-08-004 Educational Leave.
I'll start to my right, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins, Ms. Ogburn, Mrs. Shea. And if I just might note, these policies will not be approved until the October 26 meeting, so there is still time, should you have questions or comments.
Absolutely.
Dr. Cashwell, next item.
All right. Also, there is an omission to one word within this policy. That's the recommended change. That's the omitting the word emergency within the policy. And this is a proposed revision to policy P4-08-005 Flexible Sick Leave.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments on this policy? Next policy?
All right. Next policy for review includes technical edits, and this is policy P4-08-006 Temporary Absence from Premises.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments on this policy? Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
Okay. This is a review of a policy for which there are no recommended changes, but comes in this package of leave-related policies, and that's policy P4-08-007 Work Related Absence.
Board members, any questions or comments on this policy? Next item.
Okay. This policy revision is including some technical edits and removes some expired language, and this is proposed revisions to policy P4-08-008 Annual Leave.
Board members, are there any questions or comments on policy P4-08-008 Annual Leave? I actually have a question.
Okay.
So, we only do, we do, per the policy, everything is done in hours, right? Not days. Is it either half or full? When employees put in for leave, do they put in?
It likely depends on the employee group and their, the way they're contracted. Is that correct, Mrs. Bolden, related to half and whole days or leave?
I was just wondering how much flexibility employees perhaps in different groups have? Is it either four hours, or if a workday is eight, then is it either four days, four hours, or eight hours?
So, for non-teaching staffs, there is no full or half days. For teachers, I believe it is full or half day.
Okay.
And that's to allow us the ability to obtain substitutes.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's the only question I had.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. All right, Dr. Cashwell, next item?
Yes. Next item are proposed revisions to policy P4-08-009 with a newly edited title, Personal Leave. And this proposed change amidst the Families First Coronavirus Response Act leave, an emergency leave that had been noted within the policy.
Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments regarding this policy? Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
Yes. The next item includes technical edits, and this is some proposed revisions to policy P4-08-010 Absence for Religious Holidays.
Board members, are there any questions or comments on this policy? Next item, please.
The next item is the recommendation for retirement of policy P4-08-011 Absence with Full Deduction and Pay as part of a comprehensive review of all leave-related policies. The recommended retirement, oh, well, actually, yes. It's recommending retirement of this one. Yes.
Board members, any questions regarding this policy, P4-08-011? Next policy, Dr. Cashwell.
All right. There are many, so I apologize for my bumble there at the end, to make sure I was reading you the right number. This one is policy P4-08-013 Civil Leave. These proposed edits are more substantive in nature. Again, this has been reviewed comprehensively with all other leave policies, and you can see some recommended revisions here.
Board members, are there any questions or comments to this policy? Ms. Atkins?
So, there's a piece in this policy I just want clarification on. It states, "An employee shall be granted civil leave with full pay for any absence necessary for taking work-related required tests for fitness, including required physical exams, recruitment interviews, test for school division required certification, and tests associated with promotions, demotions, or transfers within the school division upon giving reasonable notice to their supervisor of such absence." I wanted clarification on the timeframe of reasonable notice.
Reasonable notice? Well, certainly, as soon as the employee is aware. We don't have, like, a established number of hours, so what we would defer to is some...
I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing.
Well, I would say that reasonable notice is as soon as the employee is aware.
How do we implement that equitably across the division?
How do we implement that equitably across the division?
Right. So, in one setting, maybe reasonable notice could be hours. In another setting, perhaps reasonable notice could be weeks. So, I'm trying to understand, if someone gives a notice, it's really based upon the supervisor or principal, whomever is designated to determine if it's reasonable or not?
Well, that would be within their discretion, yes. I'm not sure the differentiation between hours and weeks once an employee is aware.
Well, I just want to understand, to ensure that reasonable notice to one individual could be, it's okay.
That is true.
You gave me an hours notice. But to a whole nother, in another culture or setting, reasonable notice could mean, no, you didn't give me enough time or enough notice. I'm trying to understand, how do we describe or give reasonable notice a timeframe? And perhaps you can't. But to implement a policy equitably, I think it's helpful to understand what a reasonable timeframe is.
So, perhaps we can, my staff and I can work on that to come up with something that provides guidance that speaks to equity as you were referring to it.
I would appreciate that, and I bring that up because I've heard that. I've heard differences, not because they're right or wrong. It's just the implementation varies depending upon the culture of a building.
That is true. We would hope that people would operate on a reasonable man standard.
Yes.
However, we can attempt to provide some guidance.
I appreciate that. Thank you for answering that question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for your question to ensure not only equity but consistency across the division. Board members, any other questions or comments to this policy? Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
Next item are proposed revisions to policy P4-08-016 Family and Medical Leave, which removes language to, related to the FFCRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act within the policy.
Board members, are there any questions or comments to this policy?
Oh, we may, I apologize. The question Mrs. Atkins asked was related to 013. So, I did, I will back up, and now also, well, unless you want to take any questions for 016, and then I can move to, backwards to 014. Any questions for 016, removing the language related to the Coronavirus Act? No? All right. Then, going back one in order, our recommendations to retire policy P4-08-014 Extended Leave Due to Illness.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Shea?
Thank you. Mine's kind of a hybrid question for 014, 017, along with new policies 021 and 023, because I think they all hover around the same larger topic of extended leave and the leave pool. So, I was just hoping, perhaps, in your infinite HR wisdom, Ms. Bolden, that you could kind of translate for us a little bit in layman's terms what the, what the overall changes are. So, we see that we're retiring two policies, and we're implementing two new policies. So, what does that look like, kind of logistically and boots on the ground, as to changes in how this operates?
Okay. And I want to make sure I'm responding to the correct policies. And so, you were speaking of the two new policies. Is that correct?
So, I think it's general, too, and while I haven't read them out, she's, of course, in reviewing the board doc's agenda, understanding new policy Sick Leave Bank being added in conjunction with retirement of catastrophic leave pool, and just how those juxtapose and are related, where we were versus where we're heading generally.
Thank you for translating. Yes.
Okay. So, with regard to catastrophic leave and sick leave bank, Sick Leave Bank is a more common reference for the policy, if you will, and so we're making that change. We're also adding to the policy some technical information regarding VRS hybrid employees and how leave applies to them. The rules applying to hybrid employees are a little different with regard to short-term disability. So, we're incorporating that in the policies as well. Let's see. If I could, I might be jumping ahead. So, the leave donation is a benefit to the employees, certainly a benefit that we don't currently have, that will allow employees to donate to individuals who are in need of leave and who have exhausted their leave. And those are, for instances, they're not everyday short-term occurrences with regard to leave. They are dealing with long-term illnesses, things of that nature.
Thank you. I'm just taking notes on what you shared with us. I think that...
And I did miss one. Sick Leave Bank, right? So, we have the Leave Donation Policy, which benefits employees who have exhausted their leave. Ms. Ogburn, I see you're frowning. Okay, you're good. I want to make sure I'm answering...
Do you have questions? No, I'm just...
I want to be sure that we make clear what the new benefit for these two new policies in comparison with the old, because this is a substantive change, and obviously, we haven't gotten to 021 and 023 yet, but, and the list, but they're related. And so, if you could kind of just, you know, in a sentence or two, summarize how this is a, this is a big change in benefit for our employees, and I'm kind of want to bring out the balloons again when I got to these two. But I, so I did, actually, this time. I did. There we go. But I think we need to really make employees understand that this is a substantial change in their leave policy, and especially due to, you know, catastrophic illness compared to what was there before. And I think that's, you know, what we're sort of, you know, it's almost like doing a comparison of the two retiring and the two new coming in.
If I may ask a question, just for clarity from Ms. Bolden and for myself and anyone else listening, are you trying to ask not only for a comparison, but how will it be communicated to employees?
Well, that's additional part of this, absolutely. I mean, I think anytime we have policy changes, we have, you know, between the binder and the clipboard, there are so many different ways that we communicate changes in policy. But this is a substantive change in our benefits for our employees. Yeah. So, this, yeah. So, any clarification?
And I'll jump in, and you can tighten up the specifics, but certainly to your point, and the way these come in order, I appreciate the question that kind of brings them together, though the explanation within each of these, I think, gives some more specifics that'll add meat to the bones. But in general, as you've stated, Mrs. Ogburn, the intent is to improve the benefit for employees, adding what has not been in place related to leave donation, right? And then, you know, looking at the Sick Leave Bank differently than what had been the Catastrophic Leave Bank. And so, certainly, some significant benefits to employees. Again, want to reiterate, these are proposed revisions for a first review, so still very much in draft, coming to you all for the first time. And like with all policies, we'll continue to work through adjustments and questions you all may have, our policy committee may have. And then, of course, when we put these out for public feedback and comment, we may receive comment as well. But once any new policy would be formed up or come into effect, we would work to make changes, not only to our policy manual and guide, but to communicate those throughout the organization, and certainly to the employees who will want to know of this, of this change.
So, if I could try to provide you some information, and you can tell me if I'm not on the right track with regard to what you're seeking. So, the Sick Leave Bank and the Catastrophic Leave Policy are not too dissimilar. There are a few more components within the Sick Leave Bank policy. One of those components is the ability for individuals to use donated leave, right? From the leave...
And they have not had that ability before.
No, they have not.
So, that's the big difference.
That is the big difference.
This is, you're going to donate to your coworkers, and then it's like a little gift you're going to give to your coworkers, but you also might be the one who has to, at some point in time, take advantage of that.
That is true.
And so, that's a, that's a huge change for our employees.
That's it. And a couple of components of the Leave Donation Policy, again, that would be a new benefit for our employees. Employees would have the ability to donate to any employees, and they can also donate to their family members. So, if it's not a family member, the max that a person could donate to another employee is five days, but if it's to a family member, they can donate up to 60 workdays. So, that's a significant benefit as well.
Significant, yeah. Sorry, can I?
Yeah. So, am I understanding this, instead of being a pool, this is a directed donation to a specific employee?
The leave donation is twofold. It can be a pool, or it can be directed to a family member.
Okay. So, the new piece really is the directed donation. Is that right?
Well, the ability to donate leave is new. Period.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And if I'm correct, I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump in again, because I did before without being recognized, so I apologize for that. But I, this would be in addition to, a benefit in addition to an employee if they wanted to go on to FMLA, for example. So, they could exhaust this leave. Am I right? Or is this connected to FMLA?
So, all the leaves are connected, that we're bringing, the policies that we're bringing forth are connected to some type of illness or care for parents, so all of that's related to FMLA. So, it would be leave that a person could use while they're in the FMLA status.
Got it. Okay.
Point of clarity. Thank you, Ms. Ogburn, for that question. Point of clarity on that. So, they exhaust, they don't have to exhaust their leave first. They could use FMLA first if they're eligible.
So...
And again, this is so your lane. We're asking detailed questions, but...
So, really, which policy are we referencing?
I think, I think I know the question you're asking, and maybe it's good to clarify some here, and we can provide a follow-up for the board, but, you know, the Family Medical Leave Act is the set of protections that covers an employee when they need to take leave for a series of reasons, as Mrs. Bolden described. The kinds of leave they can draw from during that time may vary, from the leave they've accrued, leave that's donated, the parental leave, paid parental leave, unpaid. All of those things can happen when you're under that FMLA umbrella, that protected leave, period, if that makes sense.
So, if I could add, in order to use sick leave, or leave through the Sick Leave Bank, you have to have exhausted your leave balances.
Okay. That's what I was getting to, because it differs from the parental leave that we discussed at last meeting, and we're going to, it's going to come before us again today. So, thank you for, because that's kind of what I was trying to get to, which would be in an FAQ, but just for the greater understanding of the board, since this is our first time through it, and we won't vote on it until October 26. Thank you for the clarity.
And understanding FMLA is a large, broad category, and, you know, reasons for leave that may fall within that will vary drastically. And so, really, would just, you know, note that our team in HR would work with any individual looking to go out on leave related to FMLA, to explore all of the options and nuances, because it'd be hard to generalize.
Okay. Board members, any more questions on this portion? And then, I would say, what, we just finished item 5.14 on our agenda, so now we're going to talk about officially review retirement of policy P4-08-017 Catastrophic Leave.
Correct. And so, that was the question Mrs. Shea posed. If this is being retired, what is coming in its place? And she foreshadowed items 5.17, 18, 19, and by, yes, and 19. So, next comes my note to you related to an opportunity to review approved revisions to policy P4-08-019. These are technical edits that remove some expired language.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Board members, any questions or comments? All right. Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
All right. And as has been foreshadowed, this is, this establishes a new policy, P4-08-021 Leave Donation, to align and be consistent with county government policies as well. And again, as part of a comprehensive review of all things related to leave, we're recommending the addition of leave donation here.
This is an extraordinary policy, as are so many that we're working on for our employees to make us the best place to work, right, in Henrico Schools. Board members, any questions, comments? I mean, as official by Forbes, we are a top employer, right, Mrs. Ogburn?
Let's plug that, absolutely. If you can't, you know, say nice things about yourself, who will. I did want to make just one comment, and it was just a, just a little bit of appreciation for the attention to this, because this is something that both leave policies that we're talking about, the Leave Bank and the Donation, are things that have been brought up by our staff members before. So, just another way that we're listening... that have been brought up by our staff members before. So just another way that we're listening to people. And I really appreciate that atmosphere that Dr. Cashwell and her team have set up, that we do listen to our employees. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. And I'm also appreciative of the continual review of policies, to make sure that we're up to date, even if it is a technical edit. There, we're continuing that, that laborious work, but it is, it is appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogborne. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
Next is a review of policy P4-08-022, reemployment and leave balances. And again, this is a new policy to clarify how these balances would work for re-employed staff.
Board members, any questions or comments on this policy? All right, I just have to note, this is entirely new. So you can leave, and then if you're not paid out, you can come back, what, within six months? Ms. Bolden, do you mind if I ask you a more detailed question, just to, to understand how this would actually work? So you could actually leave?
Yes, and we have had employees fall into this category. They leave employment with us and find out that we are, in truth, a better employee, and they seek to return. If they have not been gone longer than six months, and their leave balances have not been paid out, their leave status is reinstated.
That's amazing. Thank you for the point of clarity on that. I appreciate it. Dr. Cashwell, next item.
Yes, next item, again, a new policy. This creates a new sick leave bank for benefits eligible employees, and that is policy P4-08-023.
Board members, any questions or comments on this item? Thank you. Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
All right, leaving the policy arena and on to another topic. This one, I am seeking your acceptance of the Individual Student Alternative Education Grant Award, or ISAP, in the amount of $49,038.14 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Board members, may I have a motion?
I move that the school board accept the Individual Student Alternative Education Plan Grant Award.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea, for the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it, Reverend Cooper or Ms. Atkins? Reverend Cooper, thank you for that second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The grant is accepted.
Thank you. Next, in keeping with our theme sort of around the policy reviews, want to provide a comprehensive update related to some of our efforts to recruit, retain, and reward educators. Have a number of staff coming forward to provide this highlight of a number, again, of our efforts in this arena, particular to teacher educators. Like Mrs. Jackson's come forward to kick us off.
Good afternoon, Chair Consella, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am Kenya Jackson, Talent Acquisition Ambassador. And today, I, along with my colleagues from the Departments of School Leadership and Professional Learning and Leadership, are excited to share highlights and updates on existing initiatives that support teacher recruitment and retention, to include Opportunity Schools and Teacher Fellows. First, I would like to showcase a designation that spotlights the exceptional community that has been cultivated in Henrico County Public Schools. Forbes, a renowned authority in recognizing excellence, has bestowed upon HCPS the honor of being named one of America's Best in State Employers in the Nation for 2023. That's a round of applause. This prestigious recognition underscores the collaborative efforts of our dedicated staff and the, and the enduring positive impact we are making on the education of our students. To continue our highlights and updates, I will share information regarding the recently approved HCPS parental leave policy, current teacher staffing percentages, and the annual Resident Educator and ITEACH initiatives for attracting and retaining teachers. Henrico County Public Schools is always a leader in honoring and supporting employees. The recent approval of the school board of a parental leave policy is just one example of why the division is one of America's Best in State Employers. Beginning September 1, HCPS made a historic enhancement to its employee benefits program, offering up to eight weeks of paid, job-protected parental leave, in conjunction with the additional five remaining weeks of eligible FMLA leave options during a rolling 12-month period. This new benefit is intended to support mothers and fathers who are becoming parents through birth, adoption, or foster care programs. Understanding that each family's journey is unique, this leave policy offers flexibility to our employees to tailor parental leave to their individual needs. Whether taken all at once or in increments, the policy ensures that HCPS employees have the freedom to create and utilize a paid leave plan that aligns with their personal circumstances. Such efforts directly impact teacher recruitment and retention and speak volumes about the school board's commitment to ensuring that every classroom is staffed with valued educators for each of our 49,991 students. Currently, teaching positions are 98.3% filled. To facilitate full staffing by ensuring a teacher pipeline for HCPS, new for this year, the division created the Annual Resident Educator Position, and is one of the first school divisions in Virginia to embark upon a partnership with ITEACH, an alternate pathway for provisionally licensed teachers to attain full licensure within one year at no cost to the teacher. In this age of teacher shortages, board substitutes are integral to fill gaps and are an excellent candidate pool for which to develop fully licensed teachers. Accordingly, the Annual Resident Educator Position is designed to express commitment and support to the board substitute by providing the opportunity to occupy a full-time employment position that fills the role of a vacant teaching position for a portion of the school year. In order to be eligible, the substitute must remain in the same teacher vacancy for a minimum of 30 student days, demonstrate mastery in that specified role, and receive a recommendation from the school principal to obtain the role. Annual Resident Educators receive BRS benefits, tuition reimbursement, paid holidays, leave benefits, and health insurance benefits. To assist provisionally licensed teachers to become fully licensed, HCPS has launched its own Virginia Department of Education-approved pathway by partnering with ITEACH to fund the six required professional studies courses needed to full, for full licensure, while also providing internal HCPS support through in-person professional learning. ITEACH is an online program that provides an alternative pathway to licensure, and one of the greatest benefits of the program is that full licensure can be attained in one year. With targeted professional learning through the lens of an Henrico educator, partnered with coursework from ITEACH, eligible provisionally licensed teachers will have the resources and support needed to become competent professionals in the classroom. Currently, 103 educators have expressed interest in enrolling in the cohort. Next, you will hear from Anne Marie Sealy, who will provide an update on Opportunity Schools.
Good afternoon. Beginning in the 2023-24 school year, Henrico County Public Schools designated select schools with high rates of vacant positions and provisionally licensed staff as Opportunity Schools through the HCPS career ladder. This is a new pathway within the career ladder through which schools selected by HCPS receive additional staffing resources and specialized professional learning. Fully licensed instructional staff also earn a compensation supplement. The nine Opportunity Schools are listed here. They will remain designated as Opportunity Schools for three years. The purpose of an Opportunity School designation is to provide holistic support to recruit and retain fully licensed instructional personnel in schools having difficulty doing so. The additional support for designated schools includes: a new recruitment and retention incentive instructional personnel employed by the school in positions that require such licenses will receive; that totals more than $3,000 per person each year; a full-time teaching fellow assigned to each school to provide limited direct classroom instruction and coaching support to staff in the building; one additional permanent substitute teacher assigned to the school; additional opportunities for tailored professional learning for teachers specific to one's position and licensure status; one additional administrative leader in each of the secondary schools; and principal professional learning opportunities tailored to the leads, needs of leaders. The focus of the work with principals at Opportunity Schools is instructional leadership. In addition to supporting the schools, the principals to develop the school quality plan, there is an increased focus on ongoing collaboration around the HCPS teaching and learning framework, as well as providing quality, timely teacher feedback on lesson design and delivery. Opportunity principals meet weekly with a small team of chiefs and directors to discuss and observe instruction. And now, Dr. Tracy Weston, Director of Professional Learning and Leadership, will provide an overview of the teacher fellow position.
A Henricate Teacher Fellow is a highly effective classroom teacher who spends a portion of the workday teaching students and a portion working closely with first-year and provisionally licensed teachers. This position, created as a part of the career ladder, supports new and provisionally licensed teachers in Opportunity Schools with lesson design, delivery, assessment, student engagement through strong tier-one instruction, partner teaching, and the day-to-day management of professional responsibilities. Teacher fellows spent four weeks during the summer fully immersed in targeted professional learning to prepare for their new roles. The professional development included sessions on CHAMP's classroom management, leading and facilitating professional learning communities, as well as insights from the Human Resources Team regarding best practices to support provisionally licensed educators. Through the four weeks of working and learning together, the nine teacher fellows developed a collaborative network within their Opportunity Schools. In preparation for the new school year, teacher fellows attended New Teacher Academy alongside new teachers in their assigned schools. This additional week provided them an opportunity to, to, to meet and establish relationships with new and provisionally licensed teachers in their buildings. As the year has started, teacher fellows have assumed a myriad of roles, including spending a portion of their day in the classroom teaching. Teacher fellows are assigned to a grade level or content area that was selected in collaboration with building administrators based on need. In addition to directly working with students, they also provide support to their grade level or department colleagues. While the primary focus is supporting new educators, teacher fellows are available to support staff schoolwide. They are able to help plan, model, partner teach, and provide guidance and support for teachers who may need additional assistance. They also work collaboratively with other school and district coaches to provide a layered approach to teacher instruction. At the conclusion of the first four weeks in the new position, teacher fellows were asked to provide feedback on the training they received and what it means to them to be a teacher fellow. The responses were overwhelmingly positive, and I wish I could read what each person said. But for today, we will limit the responses to what two teacher fellows shared. "I appreciate that HCPS provided an avenue for teachers who want to grow and move as professionals that does not require them to leave the classroom. I feel like I can advocate for new teachers in Opportunity Schools and be a resource for them. It is a blessing to be a teacher fellow. For me, it's the best of both worlds. I feel seen and heard as a veteran teacher and a teacher leader. I can't think of a time when I had felt disappreciated for my strengths and encouraged to continue where I'm needed the most." And now, as we've heard from our teacher fellows, let's hear from the team at Highland Springs High School on what it means to them to have a teacher fellow in their building.
Education has changed a lot in the last couple of years, where we're looking at provisionally licensed teachers, teachers who are not classically trained as classroom teachers. So the Teacher Fellows program is something that gives us the opportunity to support new teachers.
So we looked at it, we started the...
We have one person who is set and ready to teach you any, any skills you need, whether it be content knowledge or just basic teaching practices.
I am the biology lead teacher. So I do planning for biology. I teach a biology class. I am supporting the new teachers, so I try to touch base with all of our new teachers. So I do check-ins. I do observations. I am trying to support our provisionally licensed teachers, as well as our board subs. So anywhere I can help, I try to.
It could be, how do I find HCPSU? That something as simple as that, or I remember you said that you have a student. How did you build that relationship? Because we always say we want to build meaningful relationships, and she definitely has helped me with students who may need a little bit more love.
Sometimes I go armed with the question, do you need me to listen? Do you need advice? Do you need me to advocate for you? What do you need? I'm here to help.
What was your hypothesis about what would...
My classroom also serves as a lighthouse classroom in case someone wants to come in to observe.
Sometimes when people are out of the classroom, they come, become a little removed. But since she's still in here in the field with us, she can use what she is using in her class. She can pass it on to us, and we can see real time that it actually works.
Crystal Wood does a phenomenal job. She's truly vested in what we do in our building. Having her transition into the teacher fellow role helps us to have a person that understands what we want to see happen in our classrooms, but then also still have her foot in the classroom as well, working directly with kids.
I live in Highland Springs. My son is a Springer. I've been here for eight years. I love the staff, and I just love the school. So I wanted to make sure that I was here to support that.
Highland Springs High School is a very unique community, and you have to be vested in what we're doing and our success. And she is truly vested in what we do, and that makes a difference with how she goes about supporting teachers. She truly cares about our community, our kids, and how we want to move our building forward.
I'll admit, some days are rough. Some days are rough. But honestly, looking at our kids and even looking at our fellow teachers, that's why we come back every day. So you have to love it. It really resonates with me. She loves us, and she loves this place.
It's really satisfying to help new teachers and to further our field. Not as many teachers graduate now as did before COVID, and so we need everybody we can get.
She has such a wealth of knowledge. Like, this building is very big, and you can kind of feel alone at times. And she always makes you feel warm. She always shares everything that she knows, and it's always from a place of love. So I can appreciate that.
It's a juice worth a squeeze, we got to talk about sometimes here. And we felt that it was, because we knew losing her in the classroom only impacted the 125 students she may have on her caseload. But now, having her be able to impact other teachers, now you take that 125, and you duplicate that times the amount of teachers that she has the opportunity to reach. Now she's reaching more students, because she's able to use her skill set, her expertise, to help teachers move down the road of success with them and their students. So yes, losing her from the classroom did have an effect, but the impact and the, just what we can see on the payoff side, is something that we feel is really good for us at Highland Springs High School.
As demonstrated through the information shared today, recruiting, retaining, and rewarding HCPS staff is a collective endeavor involving employees, departments, our superintendent, our school board, and other stakeholders. Together, we are all instrumental in building a community that values, supports, and empowers our employees. The highlights presented are representative of the powerful synergy existing in HCPS that fosters innovation and excellence for employees and all... that fosters innovation and excellence for employees and ultimately student growth and achievement. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information today. At this time, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Ms. Bolden and your team. Board members, I'm going to start to my right with Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to make a few statements before I ask my questions to how important this presentation is. We have nine high schools, and five of them just received the honor of being ranked as the nation's best by U.S. News and World Report. All these schools are located in the Western Henrico. While this is definitely something to be proud of for our whole division, it only serves to remind us and reinforce the narrative that there are some disparities that still exist between Eastern and Western schools. We want to make sure that we celebrate all of our high schools because they all are accredited, but we also want to make sure that all of our high schools are ranked among the nation's best, and this should be an attainable goal. But to get there, our schools must have a level playing field. It starts with making sure that we have fully-staffed schools with qualified licensed teachers from elementary to high. It's also imperative that our recruitment retention efforts are targeted and effective for our Eastern Henrico schools that did not make this list. So we do have these nine opportunity schools programs that we started this year in hopes that we'll be able to provide pathways for staffing some of our higher-need schools. Now, my question is quick. Could you share how we arrived at the $3,000 incentive, that amount? And how are we evaluating whether this amount would be enough of a financial incentive to effectively meet our recruitment goals?
I'll take a first stab at that one and let you know that the... All of the things you see included in that opportunities designation, whether it be the stipends, the support, really came from a tremendous amount of work that our team did listening to staff in the schools who were experiencing these challenges with turnover rates, high numbers of new teachers, and these staffing challenges. Asking teachers, administrators, what do you need more of? And we also looked at the body of work nationally, right? So this is not a challenge unique to Henrico. This is a challenge others in our region are facing. We can look across the state and nationally where schools are experiencing these kinds of challenges and looking to say, where has a difference been made? What strategies can we employ? And so, you know, we can see evidence over the last decade or so where school systems may have moved to more pay and challenging schools. And what we saw is, in the long run, that wasn't the difference maker. And in fact, many studies showed that factor alone wouldn't make a difference. So this team did the incredible work of figuring out what, along with a monetary incentive on the career ladder, would be a difference maker. We heard things like supports, extra hands-on deck to support our new teachers, our provisionally licensed teachers, not only to guide them but to shepherd them long-term into the profession. And so you see the teacher fellows as a part of that. You see personalized tailored professional development support. And so to your question, you know, how will we know if it's effective? Our team is meeting with the opportunity schools regularly. Of course, ultimately, we hope to move the needle within this three-year designation for these schools so that their statistics no longer look like they did when they entered this opportunity schools designation when it comes to looking at turnover rates and vacancy rates, you know? But we remain flexible to meet the school's needs. And so what support looks like starting the year may look different at the end of the year, may look different as we embark in year two or three with these opportunity schools. So I would say it remains a work in progress. Mrs. Seeley mentioned the weekly meetings with the principals in those schools to monitor progress and outcomes and see where we may need to adjust.
Well, I appreciate you answering my second question, because I was going to ask, what is the criteria that we're going to use to assess the success of it? Now, before I get to that, so is the 3,000 lump sum, is it annual, is it spread out? How is it dispersed? I never asked that question.
Mr. Wack is coming up, though it seems like Mrs. Bolden can answer.
I was just going to note, it's $3,076 this year, and it is paid semi-monthly over the course of the school year, and that will grow as the pay plan changes in future years.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wack. Do you have any sneakers, because you got to be real fast? Do we have any, Ms. Bolden, any exit interview of the teachers who previously worked at our opportunity schools to determine what unique factors contributed to the departure decision in addition to the financial incentive, which else might help the recruitment and retain?
Yes, sir. We certainly do have exit interview data that we review and analyze as people leave us.
I appreciate that. You know, one thing that I would love, I don't know if this is possible, when we talk about the incentivization, to provide some type of housing assistance in partnership with the county to help with recruitment of these opportunity schools. If there are any other incentives also we need to bring to the table, we have to continue to think outside the box to remove barriers, to create pathways. All of our schools are competing on that level. Finally, I would say that in our assessment of our opportunity schools, we look at whether the designation of being referred to as an opportunity school has any potential negative impact on recruitment or retention efforts, or how our students who attend these schools or our staff who work at these schools view themselves. My context is meaning opportunity may imply that there's something wrong or different about this school, and so I just want to make sure that everybody can understand that this is not negatively connoted, but it's meant to be an empowerment statement, not negatively. Can you just speak to that real quick?
Yes, sir. And we were very deliberate in selecting a name to categorize this effort by, and again, we solicited input, and we thought that opportunity schools personified, if you will, what we were endeavoring to do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bolden. That's it from me, Madam Chair.
I would just note anecdotally to add on to that answer, absolutely, especially in the early weeks of the release of this designation, saw a lot of positive feedback and saw it making a difference right away with individuals choosing to work at opportunity schools, not just because of the supports or the money, but because of their calling to really make a difference. And I think we heard that in the story of the teacher fellow and the new teachers who are highlighted in the video that was specific to Highland Springs. But I think each of our opportunity schools could share those kinds of positive stories.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell, Reverend Cooper. Next, Ms. Atkins.
Lots of thoughts. First, thank you for this presentation. I thoroughly enjoyed the video. I know that this division is committed to success of students and staff. There is no doubt about that. And I just wanted to start with that and let you know that you are seen in the work that you are doing, not just in opportunity schools, but across Henrico and outside of it, really being attuned to knowing that when there is a need, that we are trying to fulfill it, period. The other part I want to talk about is more around socioeconomic and funding disparities. They are across Henrico and our country. Some of what we are seeing are remnants of what's happening in our country, in our state. Therefore, it takes more than Henrico County to solve it. I think where we stand right now, we need more investment. I am grateful for our board of supervisors, but what we really need is more investment from a state and federal level, specifically in wellness, safety, and money. I think it's very difficult to solve something that did not start within a county, in other words. Additionally, I think when we're looking at investment from the state or federal level, there needs to be more attention in special needs and English language learners. It's another space that a county can really provide progress in, but to keep up with the future, we certainly need the help from the state and federal levels. And I wanted to be very intentional in saying that, that we are solving for something that has been around before Henrico County has been around, and it takes more help to get there. I also share a community perspective. Parental involvement and community support plays a crucial role. We need more of it. It does not start in the school. It starts in the home and in the community, in getting our children to fall back in love with going to school and reading. So I say that because I'm wondering if you could share more when it comes to recruitment. Giving the community and families the opportunity to come into our schools is another way to recruit. When individuals, grandmothers, grandfathers, aunts, and uncles come into our schools to volunteer, they too fall in love again. A volunteer can turn into an employee when they have that experience. So can you share with me on how we are not asking folks to reach us to find opportunities, but how are we going to the people to let them know what the opportunities are to volunteer in our schools?
So I think you're really talking about grassroots efforts, Mrs. Atkins. And so we endeavor to reach at different grassroots levels. We advertise, recruit in the beauty parlors and the barber shops, in the grocery stores, anywhere we can informally. And more formalized efforts are through organizations like mentor organizations, our sororities and fraternities, those type of organizations as well. But really, any type of grassroots effort we can latch on to, we are amenable and welcome those as well.
I'm going to do a shameless plug. For folks that are watching or may watch later, if you are not enrolled in PTA or PTSA, it's a fabulous way to get involved in a school. Then I'll turn back to my other questions. When you said that, I just, it sparked in my head, you know, that PTA, PTSA, PTO, they work, and the success is based on folks getting involved in them. The other space I think I'll go ahead and shout out, Verina High School and Highland Springs High School, how very proud I am of them. Their staff went out into communities to share their good news. Part of the makeup with the word opportunity is how you perceive it. I perceive it as positive, but it needs to be said that it's positive and not left up to perception. We have to say it. Opportunity is positive. It means we have choices. The other perspective, you know, as I reviewed the presentation and the materials, I want to know more about workplace conditions. That's another way to recruit. When workplace conditions are in a good state, I think you naturally will have folks gravitate to that space. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the feedback within our schools around the workplace conditions?
Yes, ma'am. I believe our DARE department surveys our employees annually, and we call them hygiene factors, but some of those workplace questions are included in those surveys. And certainly, the surveys are sent back to the various departments so we can be informed about the efforts we need to make on behalf of our employees based upon their feedback.
And Mrs. Atkins, we can provide some additional information related to that topic, and I want to note that in preparing today's presentation, the team cherry-picked two or three things they wanted to highlight related to recruit, retain, reward, but in no way is it exhaustive. And many of the things you're bringing up are absolutely critical to recruit, retain, reward, and so we're happy to provide some additional information offline on some of those things that weren't included in the presentation. But I know they wanted to highlight some specific things as we started off the new year related to some new things with parental leave and opportunity schools, so I'm happy to follow up with more to that.
Thank you for that. And also, while you're looking into the data, I really want to know more about the story. I learn a lot from the data. It's important, but it's those quotes, like you mentioned, that helps me really understand their experience. It's the difference between a text and a phone call. I can say, "Hi, how are you?" in a text, and someone replies, "Fine." But if I'm on the phone and I say, "Hi, how are you?", I'll get a whole story. So while you're going through the data, I am absolutely interested in, but I want to hear and learn the full story. What is the workplace condition in the cafeteria like? What is the workplace condition in the classroom like? How do you feel when you walk into your school building as a human, not necessarily just a teacher? So, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I'm very interested in learning what that is, and then I'll have four more, because I know we have other questions, I am sure. Thank you. I'm thinking about wellness. I know we have the Employee Assistant Program. What other options do we have for employees for wellness? And I'll also do a wonderful shout-out with our calendar. We are headed to a great place of balance in looking at dates, specifically trying to have four-day weekends, so forth and so on. But as our staff gets nestled into the school year, I'm very curious around what else are we doing for wellness for our staff?
And I wonder...
We can provide you a summary of some of those efforts, but absolutely, the wellness days, as I'd mentioned, our school-based mental health teams not only serve our students but partner with principals to provide a number of efforts, and certainly some of those are unique to the individual culture of the school building when it comes to building culture, rapport, positive relationships, belonging, and wellness. So you mentioned the EAP program. We have a new provider. We've just provided that information. And then, of course, when additional wraparounds might be needed, perhaps there's a school-based crisis in which we need to wrap our arms around students and/or staff, our school-based teams do that, and we can get you a list of employee wellness efforts. If you have anything more to add.
No, I was just going to put a, you know, everything Dr. Cashwell said and Mrs. Bolden too, obviously, but we have really tried to think outside the box this year, particularly around crisis with our adults, because we know that when we have crisis in the school, it's very important to help adults and students through those crises. So we're currently in the process of working through an MOU with some therapy dogs that we can have come in during a crisis that would be there for the students and for the adults as a way to help them through and have some comforting, you know, pets and animals in the building, which we know from research really seems to help. So we have all the things we've always had in place, but continue to look at the needs of our employees and really try and think outside the box to have new and creative efforts to help them.
I'm very happy to hear that we're thinking outside of the box because we're in a very good place. We are going, headed in a direction where I think we are trying to do more and moving out of a more archaic space when we think of wellness. Wellness isn't just, "I feel good today." Thinking about the past couple of years, however, there is some major trauma coming out of COVID, and you layer that on with some of the violence that we are seeing, whether it's in a particular school or surrounding a school or in a whole other state. And so as an employee in a school building, knowing that there's these layered things that are happening, I want to make sure that we are thinking outside of the box so that wellness is more than a day.
Right, that's right.
Sometimes it's a listening ear, so I'm excited to hear that the team is exploring.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And then the last question I have is around ITech. Don't know who takes that question. I was not writing quick enough. Can you tell me how many, I think I heard 100, but how many individuals are interested in that program?
103. There were 170 that were eligible, but 103 opted to participate. Many of the people that opted not to participate this year were newly hired teachers that need to get that first year under their belt, and considering that this program can be attained in one year, they thought it best to maybe explore it their second year. So we were really pleased with the 103 participants that decided to opt into the program.
That's very exciting. I'm glad to hear that. What are the costs associated with ITech?
So for each participant, it's about a $3,300 cost that we will be covering for the eligible participants, which will remove a huge barrier as they are proceeding through their teaching journey.
Do we have a certain goal of how many teachers that we want to participate, or is there a cap for cost purposes?
Well, our school board, in conjunction with Dr. Cashwell...
Well, our school board, in conjunction with Dr. Cashwell, our budget department has been very flexible as we are considering the needs, because having a strong professional teacher in the classroom will maximize the experience for our students. And so, right now, the eligibility is based upon our VDOE guidelines. Our ultimate goal is to one day have this program offered to all provisionally licensed teachers.
That is the goal. I'm glad to hear that. That's where I was headed. That's where I was headed. I'm very pleased to hear that. Let me see, I did have a Teacher Fellows question. How many Teacher Fellows do we have?
We have one, one at each opportunity school.
So we have...
Nine.
Nine? And in regards to our Teacher Fellows, it sounds like they're doing quite a bit, including being a teacher. How do we ensure that they have a good balance between all of the different levels of responsibilities?
They are fully supported by the professional learning team. We meet with them weekly on Thursday afternoons for two hours. We come together as a group. We talk about their successes. We talk about questions that they have. They are provided professional learning, and it's also a time for them to collaborate. The feedback we have received from them since their first day on July 17th has been overwhelmingly positive. We ask for continual feedback in person and in writing. They state that they feel fully supported and that they're treated like professionals and that they love the work they're doing.
I do want to add a point of clarity, because it may not have been crystal clear in the presentation. They don't carry a full teaching load.
Okay.
So while they do have a teaching load, much of that's been removed for their work and working alongside new teachers, supporting teachers getting into those classrooms. But then they also kind of have a foot in the, may have a section, they're still teaching.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. That's true. Each Teacher Fellow teaches one class, and the rest of their time is devoted to first provisionally licensed teachers and first-year teachers, and then full staff.
That's a big difference. I had a buttload of questions, having someone with a full load take on all those other responsibilities. I don't know how that's possible.
Absolutely. And that was, you know, the principal white was explaining in the video, you know, understanding that's now a teacher vacancy to fill, the positions that are no longer, are the classroom sections that are no longer being taught by the master teacher, but the master teacher's impact multiplies when working alongside the new teachers. And so certainly, the deal with Teacher Fellows, that master teacher comes out of the classroom except for the one section to remain sharp. And I think the new teacher really highlighted, well, this is someone who gets it. They're in the classroom still, but they also have the ability to spend time mentoring and working alongside us in our classrooms. And then that one section that's being taught is actually a lighthouse or model classroom where folks can go and observe best practices in action. So there's a lot of positives about that model.
Well, that is all that I have. I appreciate you. It's great work being done by the team. We're gonna continue with the progress that we are seeing in our positive opportunity schools. We have to say that. And I really am grateful for your work, and I do see positive results. So thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins and Mrs. Ogburn.
Thank you. I, you know, I am reminded of my younger self. And as I get ready to celebrate another birthday, boy, that's a long time ago, when I was a first-year teacher. And I would so love to have somebody that I could lean on, could talk to, ask the questions you're embarrassed to ask, you know, that kind of thing, because you think, you know, you're alone in that. And this makes them feel so supported. That's the part I really keyed in on, Tracy, when you said they feel supported, because especially in the beginning, you really need that. But what I want to do, Ms. Harris, I don't know how we get back, I just want to go back to the third slide. The one that has the, yeah, we're gonna get to that in a minute. The one with the, all four of them together. Yeah, whatever slide that is, that one. But I kind of, as I was watching this, I found myself wanting to connect some dots. Because when I look at this list, plus the Teacher Fellows, plus the opportunity schools, can we back up one? This is where I got. And I'm like, you know, this is how this happens, because we're really listening to teachers and staff members more than we ever have. And I look back over the last nine years that I've been sitting here and the things that we have talked about with teachers and staff members, the things they felt were missing or that we could do better. I think, as I said earlier, I think Dr. Cashwell has really set up an atmosphere where teachers feel comfortable saying, this is how we need to be supported. This is what we need, and this is where it takes us. So I don't know, I just felt the need, I want that to stay up there a little bit longer. But I just felt the need to connect those dots. But that's how that happens. That intentional work to make this a better place to work is how we achieve the recruit, retain, reward goal. I mean, it's all tied together, but anyway. So I appreciate all the work y'all are doing. And that outside-of-the-box thinking, absolutely, Dr. Hughes, that is key, because if we keep doing the same things we've always done, it doesn't work. And we've, we know what doesn't work. So trying something new is, and again, listening to our staff is so important. And y'all kind of asked all the questions, so I just wanted to make a comment. But anyway, thank you, I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, thank you all for your work. Some of my questions already got answered around, along the way, so I'll try to keep it kind of concise. But I'm really excited about the Teacher Fellows, as well as, as y'all pointed out, in opportunity schools, there's really a focus on instruction. I know, as Ms. Ogburn mentioned, but Ms. Ogburn and I can really identify with, the best PL comes from the teacher down the hall, right? And it comes from having someone readily accessible to ask those questions, like the first-year teacher did about, how did you reach this type of student? How did you navigate X, Y, and Z? But also that lighthouse model where you can go in and observe. I remember my first year, I got to go observe for a whole day, a physics teacher at Godwin, and I learned so much that was intangible. I learned things that I wouldn't have known to ask. And so, building that model of instructional focus where we have the wisdom and experience of these master teachers to be able to invest in new teachers, but not just new teachers, right? All of our teachers. I think that is a game changer when we look at school community as a whole, especially schools that have significant turnover and may not have as many teachers who have been there for 20, 30 years that are just rooted in the building. This is creating that culture within the schools that I think all of our schools can really benefit from when we, when we look at that. I love that the, for the Teacher Fellows to say, I feel like I'm being treated and valued as a professional in what I bring to the table. And I'm able to still do it while staying in the classroom. And with, between this and career ladders, really looking at, how do we provide career-forward mobility while allowing our educators, who are most passionate about the nuts and bolts of teaching and learning in the classroom, to stay in that as well? I think that's something in Hemricha is doing really well, especially compared to other divisions. I think we're leading the way in that. And I just, I want us to continue that, right? I want us to continue that hunger for educators who are master teachers to continue with the day-to-day, face-to-face investment in our kids, but also get to share more, right? I think you said, broaden their impact. And so I'm really, really excited about that program and the idea that they're still teaching but a reduced load because you can't do it all. And so providing those opportunities. Looking at the other pieces, the annual resident educator that I teach, what kept coming to mind is removing the barriers. Teaching can be a really hard job to get into, especially like transitioning into later because of the barriers of things like student teaching where you're essentially working without pay, or you're paying to work in the traditional model, you know, licensure, even, you know, being a board sub, not having benefits, right? So what I see over and over again is intentionality in removing the barriers so that people can enter the field of education. And that is so different than what we have seen traditionally for education, and that's thinking outside the box. And so, one of my questions had been around the I Teach and the cost, which you answered. So about a $3,300 cost to us, no cost for those enrolled in the program, right, for our people being licensed, correct?
That is correct. And so, the only cost that they may incur that would be covered by tuition reimbursement would be any additional assessments that they may have, such as the Praxis or VCLA. But with the increase of the $1,500 tuition reimbursement, that should support that need as well.
Do we have an expectation of a commitment, since we are investing in the front end in their licensure? Do we have an expectation of a commitment from those that we have invested in, if you will, on how long they will stay with us on the back end?
Multiple teams have collaborated on this. And one of the components of I Teach is that because this is a specific Hemricha County program, any coursework that is completed for this one year, and in conjunction with the professional development, is tailored specifically for Hemricha County public schools. And so should a participant decide to separate within this one year, it would not allow them to transfer those completed modules, should they go to a different school or school division. We do not have a commitment for them to stay beyond this year. Many of our I Teach participants are teachers who have been with us for multiple years, but they still hold a provisional license. And so, we took that into consideration as well. I think the big component that we have provided in a written agreement with our I Teach participants is that they must uphold the requirements of fulfilling the modules, successfully fulfilling the I Teach modules, in addition to attending the monthly professional development. And that comprises the full component of the I Teach program. So failure to do one or both of those components would prevent their progression with the provisional license requirements.
Great, thank you so much. Well, I won't be repetitive with what my other colleagues have shared, but again, thank you for the focus on instruction and growing instruction for all of our educators and also being creative and intentional in removing barriers for those who want to enter the field.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. My colleagues have covered a lot of the questions, but I do have a couple comments and some questions for you. I'm so thrilled that we're responsive, because I remember in June, when we were presented with the climate surveys, and some of the feedback really from our, from our staff to the board was feeling heard, feeling valued, feeling supported, want to feel appreciated, right? Those things. So presentations like this and policy discussions that are ongoing, but especially some of the policies we're focusing on now, just all of our employees, we hear you, we value you, right? So, and that leads me into my next question, and this might be for Dr. Cashwell or for the HR team. What ways, because, you know, I just said the word annual survey, right? What other ways are we gathering ongoing feedback from our employees, not only in our opportunity schools, but all around Hemricha County schools, to find out, how are we doing? Because once a year isn't enough.
Well, certainly, the efforts you mentioned related to our annual survey and those things would be more global in nature. And certainly, we encourage that all of our supervisors, whether they be principals or supervisors of employees who work outside of a school site, have regular methods for gathering feedback, whether they hold focus groups or staff meetings that have a component to allow for staff voice. I actually have a number of advisory committees, superintendent advisory committees that meet throughout the year, include students, as you know, being our representative. We have principal advisory, teacher advisory, a support staff advisory. And we were so pleased at the end of, as we finished up this past school year, to get to present many of the topics that those groups surfaced and how we had worked towards a way forward that was different because of the feedback and input they'd given us along the way on any number of topics. So I mean, that's a culture that we've tried to build really from the ground up. So I mean, I think we've talked about some of the big ways we gather that feedback, but hope that the communicative nature between employees and their supervisors is open so that there's a channel for regular, ongoing feedback, as well as more formal ways through surveys and advisory committees.
I appreciate that, because Slide 3, as Mrs. Ogburn pointed out, it is special, but that is one moment in time. So to remain in this, with this elite award that we've received, this recognition, so to remain there, we must continue the work, and there still is work to be done. Just in case anybody was thinking that we were gonna stop, we are not. So I'm pleased to hear all of the opportunities highlighted throughout the year. Now, if someone could explain to me, because I realize our nine Teacher Fellows, we do have other schools, right, outside of our opportunity schools, which my colleagues have covered so well. Can you please explain, just for clarification, the support, for example, in a non-opportunity school that new teachers or provisionally licensed teachers would have?
Yeah, certainly, these support structures exist across the system, whether it's mentors, you know, grade chairs, you know, whatever it might look like in the building, both from the central down to the building level, there are supports in place for our new and provisionally licensed teachers. And ongoing professional learning, you know, that's on demand and based on individual employee need through HCPSU and our PL team. And so, you know, the opportunity school supports are above and beyond the support. So certainly don't want to give the impression, but, you know, that those supports don't exist in other schools, but it's taken to a different level based on the much greater need and the larger numbers of provisionally licensed teachers and new teachers in the opportunity schools. So they were identified with that designation because of that extensive number of individuals falling into that category. And so the model we have that works well in other buildings may not work well in an opportunity school, given the volume, and so thus the Teacher Fellow position.
So for a point of maybe clarity for those trying to understand what supports exist at the school level that might come from central office, because I've received some questions like, you know, oh, central office, it's got so many people. Well, yes, but they go out into our schools to support them, right? Like our specialists, our coaches, right? Are those other examples of...
They're great examples. And so, you know, maybe that a central office content-related specialist in science would be working with a first-year science teacher and anything related to understanding curriculum resources, planning assistance. We offer professional development courses for new teachers. And we, of course, have a New Teacher Academy. I could highlight that, where we spend a lot of time with some targeted courses that meet the needs of the individual teacher's level and content area, as well as some broader HCPS onboarding that happens. And Mrs. West, or Dr. West, if you want to add to that.
So we do have a strong mentoring program with mentors at each school that work very closely with Dr. Joe Coons and Dr. Sarah Slaughter. In addition to New Teacher Academy, they meet regularly monthly with the mentor coordinators, but we also offer mid-year afternoon quarterly opportunities for new teachers to come together for additional professional learning. Dr. Katie Smith works very closely with the provisionally licensed teachers in the Special Education Department. Our directors and specialists at central office will work with schools, and as they identify needs, or as we are in the buildings, we identify needs, will work very closely with the school teams to make sure we're putting the content resources in places for them. We also have a very robust microcreditual catalog that you'll hear an update in January, February, and the number of teachers we have, that really is that targeted professional learning of what they want to delve more deeply into and learn more about. Then, of course, our specializations after the microcredit. Then, of course, our specializations after the micro credentials. So a wealth of opportunities.
Great, thank you for the additional detail outside, right? Just to fully expand on all the supports available to our teachers out in all of our schools in Henrico. Let me see, are we thinking about adding? Because recruit, retain, reward really is, I know opportunity schools were a focus for us today. But are we thinking, because in the past four weeks, for example, I know the first three weeks, we really route bus transportation routes are, become more efficient over time. Have we thought about any type of career ladder perhaps for our transportation folks?
Yeah, the career ladder, while we began with some instructional groups, is meant to expand across employee groups. And there's some incredible work, not only ongoing related to ladder designations, but with professional learning for all employee groups. And Mrs. Bolden, do you want to add to that? I see you inching your way.
Yes, I'll just add, we have begun the career ladder program, if you will, with our classified staff, and we've started with our Department of Facilities.
Fantastic, I'm sure that will add to our recruitment of additional bus drivers needed to eliminate any and all scheduled or late arrivals and departures.
We were excited to launch the career ladder and look forward to continuing to provide updates as we really build the structures within that ladder.
Fantastic, thank you. And once again, thank you for this presentation. It was certainly timely and needed, and we can't wait to see what else you bring to us in the future. Thank you.
Ma'am Shea, I think this is the first time we've ever had that designation in our history, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it the first time, Dr. Cashwell?
To my knowledge, that is correct.
Well, let's just say hopefully it's the first, but not the last time we will have this designation.
Well, I think that's a perfect time to note the incredible efforts, not only of our presenters, but all the teams that work alongside them and our school-based administrators, because they are responsible for all the efforts that have gone into making a difference and ultimately that award. And perched in the wings, ready to present on our McKinney-Vento item, which is the next one, we have Tina Alsapp, Lisa Abernathy, and Adrian Cole Johnson coming forward. Oh, no, not presenting, but she looked like she was excited to join the party. But definitely a collaborator in this space and in this work. You'll note that on October 26th, at that monthly meeting, we'll be seeking the board's acceptance of our McKinney-Vento sub grant fund. So in advance of that item in October, we wanted to provide an overview of the work of our McKinney-Vento team as it relates to those grant funds we'll accept in October. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Alsapp.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairperson Consella, Vice Chair Atkins, Dr. Cashwell, and school board members. It is our pleasure to present to you a presentation on the highlights of the McKinney-Vento team. The purpose of the federal law, the McKinney-Vento Act, is to break down barriers to enrollment, a law for school, full school participation, and provide supports for academic success for students who are experiencing unstable housing. This presentation will provide an overview to show how the mission and vision of the McKinney-Vento team provides supports and opportunities for students and families to feel empowered, welcomed, and valued. The McKinney-Vento program is funded by a variety of federal grants, community and corporate grants and donations, and in-kind division funds. This combination of funding enables the team to go beyond the provision of federal requirements as the number of students experiencing homelessness rises. During the height of the pandemic, just as divisions across the nation, Henrico County Public Schools saw a dramatic decrease in the number of students identified as eligible under McKinney-Vento. However, with the recovery from COVID-19 pandemic still emerging and pandemic era supports expiring, the percentage of Virginia's population living with severe housing problems is steadily increasing. Therefore, identification of students needing support via the McKinney-Vento program has not only returned to, but has exceeded pre-pandemic numbers. Be it high mobility, lack of transportation, lack of sleep, lack of food, lack of hygiene, or the feeling of defeat due to being behind after multiple or extended periods of absences, the trauma associated with homelessness affects students' emotional health, physical health, and their preparedness for school. And that is where the supports and services of McKinney-Vento come into play. This slide shows how the McKinney-Vento team met federal requirements during the 2223 school year through immediate enrollment, school or origin of origin transportation, and full school participation supports for student fees, meals, and school supplies. Next, the McKinney-Vento specialists, Lisa Ann Abernathy, will share program highlights to support the Henrico Strategic Plan through staff awareness, community partnerships, and division collaborations.
Each year, the McKinney-Vento team completes a self-assessment to determine next steps in forming meaningful relationships with our students and families as we break down barriers. The team engages in very confidential conversations to determine eligibility. And most of these conversations are done over the phone. For families whose first language is not English, it is even more difficult to feel trust and safety during these conversations. Using funds from the American Rescue Plan, the team contracted with a Spanish tutor for four semesters to learn conversational Spanish. So now I can say, estoy aprendiendo español. Lo siento, hablo muy lento y no comprendo más, pero... And I can ask them for the phone number, tell them I'll call them back with an interpreter, and I can communicate with them in writing in their native language. We took our most frequently used documents and had them translated into six of the most spoken languages among HCPS families. To ensure that we are able to communicate and serve students and families who may be in crisis, funds provided an opportunity for the team to study and earn their professional trauma certifications. And we developed a 100-page guide of community resources for families and for schools. The McKinney-Vento program in Henrico is fortunate to have abundant support and rich collaborative partnerships, both internally and externally, as we work to mitigate the barriers faced by students who are experiencing homelessness. With the addition of a team member focused solely on community resources and partnerships, the team secured new relationships and strengthened existing ones, allowing us to support students and families beyond the mandates. Thanks to partnerships with the Henrico Education Foundation and the Department of Family and Community Engagement, more than $10,000 in grocery gift cards were provided to students and families. Parents and guardians of 100 students were able to fulfill their children's holiday wish lists through a partnership with the Life Church RVA and Living Women RVA. As part of their fifth Sunday Outreach Project, members of the Life Church RVA joined the HCPS McKinney-Vento and Family and Community Engagement teams to pack 200 bags of non-perishable groceries. The McKinney-Vento food pantry, which is housed right here at New Bridge, provides emergency support to families while we work to connect them to more sustainable, community-based resources. The pantry is stocked with donations from the Life Church RVA, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Living Women RVA, and private donors. Thanks to a partnership with Mercy Mall, an RVA faith-based community support organization, the McKinney-Vento team, along with members of Family and Community Engagement, hosted two events where families were provided winter coats, clothing, hygiene packets, and items to assist with food preparation. The Henrico Ministers Conference and the Henrico Community Food Bank also participated. The Mercy Mall partnership also provided the opportunities to assist families who did secure stable housing during the school year with items such as towels, sheets, shower curtains, et cetera, to set up their new home. We know that the number one factor determining whether or not a student breaks out of the cycle of young adult homelessness is the completion of their K-12 education. There is still great need as students move into their next life chapter, whether that be post-secondary education, military service, or work. As part of a transition plan, graduating seniors were gifted a brand-new laptop. And just as an aside note, 80% of the 12th graders identified as eligible under McKinney-Vento during the 2223 school year graduated. Often, we hear that students who are experiencing homelessness do not want to attend school because they're embarrassed by their clothes. To our youth, having confidence in their appearance is critical to their sense of belonging. Here at New Bridge Learning Center, we house a clothing closet stocked with brand-new clothes and shoes of the latest trends. Each student for whom a need is expressed receives three tops, two bottoms, socks, undergarments, fully stocked hygiene kits and shoes, all packed in zipped duffel bags to assist as they move from place to place. And if you've never had the opportunity to gift a young person a pair of Jordans with no strings attached, you're missing out because their joy is contagious. About five to six weeks into each school year, the McKinney-Vento team sees an influx of students who have not yet attended school for the new year. When asked why, parents often say, I didn't realize I could send my child to school without a real address, or I didn't know how to get a bus for them. In an effort to curtail the number of student no-shows at the beginning of the school year, the McKinney-Vento team decided to organize a series of summer pop-up engagement events at local area hotels. The vision for the events was to create a family cookout atmosphere with games, music, dancing, fun in the sun, treats from Grill, an event where students and families could escape the reality of survival for just a bit, have some fun, build relationships with school personnel, get connected to resources, and get set up and ready to attend school on day one. During the summer pop-up events, enrollments, McKinney-Vento eligibility, and needs assessments took place right in the field. With volunteer support from federal programs and foundational learning, Family and Community Engagement, Dominion Energy, and other partners, we considered the events of the summer of 2022 very successful with the identification of 36 students. But we knew that the events of summer 2023 could be more. So for 2023, in the summer, we added 22 vendors, bringing in community-based service providers, including Richmond City Public Schools McKinney-Vento team, so that they could meet their students and ensure educational continuity for them as well. We expanded our volunteer base to over 30 volunteers, and we were supported by the efforts of the Division-wide Plan for Summer Engagement through a collaboration with Student Support and Wellness, Family and Community Engagement, and federal programs and foundational learning. Over the three events this past July, we recorded 150 student interactions, finding 114 students eligible under McKinney-Vento for Henrico County Public Schools, and 33 students as eligible for McKinney-Vento for Richmond City, ensuring that more students were ready for day one for the 2324 school year. For the 20232024 school year, we are hope-filled and forward-focused, guided by the words connection, accountability, celebration, empowerment. The team's overarching goals are to sustain the programs and opportunities we have provided, to strengthen our community partnerships, and to obtain additional community and corporate grants. Specifically for 20232024, the McKinney-Vento team goals are to build hope, belonging, and learning by providing 100% of the federal mandates, decreasing chronic absenteeism, and increasing academic success for students who are eligible under McKinney-Vento. I thank you for the opportunity to share with you this afternoon and highlight the work being done for our students who are experiencing homelessness. We look forward to bringing the 2326 McKinney-Vento State Grant Award back to the board for acceptance very soon. We're grateful for your leadership, for your vision, and your support. We'd like to take an opportunity to recognize the team members who are in attendance today. So, Family Assessment Analyst for Eligibility and Data, Ms. McKenzie Mureles; Family Assessment Analyst for Transportation, Ms. Sarita Tyler; Family Assessment Analyst for Community Resources and Partnerships, Mr. LaShawn Green; and the McKinney-Vento Social Workers, focusing on attended support, Angie Rockwell. Thank you all.
Thank you, and I want to note, thank you for introducing members of the team. And just, you know, what I hope resonated in this presentation, while there are a number of requirements certainly attached to the McKinney-Vento funds. I think you said on one of the slides, beyond the requirements, which was most of the presentation. The work these individuals do as a team in partnership with Family and Community Engagement and others across our schools to serve the needs of these students is incredible, and it is just heartwarming. So my sincere thanks, I just, round of applause is hardly enough. But thank you for being here as part of this presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alsapp and Ms. Abernathy, and for the entire team for being here with us today and for that presentation. I'm going to start questions to my left with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you again for the presentation. You may not have an answer, so feel free to present a response later on. But are you aware of any legislative changes to subtitle 7B of this particular act?
I would be happy to get back with you on that. I will let you know that our state director from Project Hope, Dr. Patricia Pop, is wonderful at communicating with us, but I will definitely do a deeper dive and let you know.
Please keep me abreast because the number of homelessness, not just students but families, is significantly increasing. And I'm wondering if legislation are, well, I won't say wonder if they're in discussion, I'm wondering if any will come to the floor. So if you could, please keep us abreast of that. And if there's any funding attached to it is critical. So thank you for that. I also want to better understand the $9,688 in student fees. Can you give me specifically what those fees were?
So I'm happy to provide a breakdown, if you would like, percentage-wise. I can go back and get that data. But any kind of fee that's associated with full school participation so that a student doesn't have to worry about being held back or not being able to participate, clubs, athletics, anything like that, regular classroom instruction, those fees can be paid under McKinney-Vento.
Yes, I appreciate a follow-up on that. I asked that question, I'm actually interested in trend data. I am looking at the data based off of just conversations with families and students. There may be some level of a straight line of a trend with specific fees. And so I'm very interested to see if there's some categories that I think will pop up, and I wonder if they're the same categories with other students and families as well. So I'm curious about that. The other part is I know that there's broad reasons for the increase in homelessness specifically to Henrico County. Do we have, or have we memorialized the challenges as to what led to the homelessness?
So our focus is, for us, no, right? We sit and share on committees with the government side to kind of be that voice of advocacy for the students. And they are looking at the multiple reasons for homelessness. But it's not something that we dive into ourselves at all, especially because the definition of homelessness under McKinney-Vento is so much broader than it is under the definition of HUD.
Dr. Cashwell, what or whom would be the right individuals to understand the challenges before it got to homelessness? And that way, we could do, we could really look into the resources that we have to better serve those families?
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly we can do some legwork on this and provide you a response, but much of the a response, but much of the, of the trend data related to housing under HUD and as, as Lisa was describing, so the definition for McKinney-Vento services to be provided to students would look different and as broader as it should be than data related to HUD. But our, you know, local housing authority, state housing authority, while there's some collaboration there, we're certainly sharing challenges. You know, those pieces would be with general government, and while we collaborate, we could certainly put you in touch with some folks more directly related to that work.
I would appreciate that. I'm thinking in the future, and so if we start now to be a bit more proactive, then we might have a chance with reducing the homelessness if we understand the challenges that families are facing, specifically the students, before they get there. So I'd love to receive that information, and I know we, we do communicate quite often with government, so I think if we start asking those questions, we might also have another opportunity to provide some solutions and have resolve. The last thing I want to ask, you mentioned it, I was not able to capture it quickly enough, was the number that have graduated. What is that number?
So, the, what I saw was 80% of our students who were identified last school year, so '22, '23, 80% of our 12th graders graduated. That's not looking at cohort graduation rates, that's specifically for our 12th graders last year.
That is all that I have, and thank you and your entire team for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ogburn, any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, you know, we always talk about meeting kids where they are, and this is truly the definition of that, and, and providing this service and this help and support to families who certainly need it. And like Dr. Cashwell said, it was a very heartwarming presentation that you gave us, but, I mean, if, if it doesn't make you pause and be grateful, I, I don't know what does because we're grateful for the work that you do and how you're helping these families, and it, it's just really an amazing part of being here. But I did have two quick questions. I actually had a constituent reach out recently and ask me if there were any resources for donating clothes, and then when I saw this was coming up, I thought I would ask you because, you know, we all know people who have growing teenagers, and this particular parent said, "Does the school system have a clothes closet?" And so if that is of interest to people, do, is that something people can donate to the clothes closet or to our family engagement team? Because this parent has asked, they asked me about this three times, so just curious.
Grateful, thank you. I'm grateful that they want to serve and to assist. For McKinney-Vento, we are very specific in making sure that our students have items that are brand-new.
Right, okay. All right, now, so I'll-
They can donate, they can donate brand-new clothing and shoes. They're certainly welcome to donate gift cards to, like, we, we take gift cards to the different stores, and we'll go shopping for our students. We're always, always welcoming that.
Okay.
And for our Face Department, we can take donations for our families-
I was going to ask y'all next.
-so that we can continue, yes.
Well, I'll reach out and to Adrienne, and then we'll coordinate that particular person.
Absolutely, so I think that, I saw Adrienne coming up too, and we'll provide you info for constituents, and certainly through our Family and Community Engagement efforts and our Full Service Community Learning Center at The Oak, there are opportunities for the kinds of donations you mentioned.
That's what I was hoping, right. And just one other question, can you tell us a little bit more about the trauma certification course that you mentioned in this? Just a little more details about how that works and who's taking that class?
Okay, so the three of us who completed the classes with the American Rescue Plan funds that we utilized, I completed, Ms. Mireles and Mr. Green completed the courses. That was through the National Association of School Social Workers Virginia Chapter, and it was the course that was done for full-on trauma certification. We are allowed to do our recertification points and maintain that professional certification every two years.
Wow, okay, great, thank you so much. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you so much, Ms. Abernathy. I will, you have the most calming voice.
Doesn't she?
And I, it was delightful, I do not have that gift, but I think particularly for the space you're working in and talking about being on the telephone to have these confidential conversations, like, what a gift that is. So, thank you for that, and just highlighting the words I heard during this presentation, I think really seemed to capture the work of your team of "hope, belonging, learning, safe, connected, empowered, and confidential." And those just resonated with me as you shared y'all's passion for meeting these students where they are and making sure they have what they need to be able to learn. So, thank you. Just one question, the, the Spanish for Education course, I, I think that's fantastic. As we have many languages in our county, do you find that the majority of the language needs you have are Spanish for our McKinney-Vento students?
But, but yes, we do, and that's why we chose to do it that way, because most of the phone calls that we were receiving were like, "Oh, oh, I'm so sorry, oh, no, no, I'm so sorry," you know? We wanted to be able to meet those families, again, right where they were, so that they could feel like they belonged and they were valued here in Henrico County. So yes, it was out of the, the vast number of inquiries that we had in Spanish.
Is there another language that we have a significant, we see a significant number of McKinney-Vento families needing? I know we have translators in a lot of languages that can meet them there, but I was just curious, as we look at language needs for this particular group and sector, does Spanish seem, and English obviously, seem to cover the majority of those language needs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. As I'm appreciative of the hard work of, that our HR department is, is doing in its intentional efforts to recruit, reward, and retain the best staff that we can, I'm appreciative of you and your staff, I'm glad that you bought them for the work that you've been doing to support our McKinney-Vento students and families. I appreciate the expansive McKinney-Vento Resource Guide that's available online. It's a PDF document, so is their version, that can be searchable online to ensure the most updated information is provided.
So, part of our ongoing efforts with that piece is to make sure that we are calling those numbers and visiting those websites, a vast undertaking of the opening of the school year, so that's going to sit on the back burner, to be quite honest, until we get through the opening of the year, but yes, so it's an ongoing effort to make sure that everything is updated and still functioning in that book.
Thank you so much. On a personal note, it's hard and heartbreaking that some families in our communities are faced with this reality. I spoke with a parent recently who came to me first for prayer and then for assistance in trying to secure housing security in my role as a pastor in the Fairfield District. What broke my heart was that the parent told me that their child hated going to school because when the bus lets them off in front of the hotel that they're living in, that other students make fun of them and say mean things like, "You don't, you ain't got a home, you live in a hotel." And for me, that's so heartbreaking, and I'm thankful for the empathetic way that you all go above and beyond because you understand the intimate realities of their reality, and we're trying to mitigate that as best we can. To help with the increased number of homeless housing and secure students in our schools, we were hiring an additional social worker this summer to focus on attendance and identify barriers for families. Could you provide an update on that hire in that position?
So, Ms. Angie Rockwell is our attendance-focused social worker. She joined us right at the beginning of July. We are thrilled already with the outreach, the summer outreach that she did for us in reaching out to parents who receive, we received return mail from for end-of-year communications or just families that we knew might have some difficulty getting connected back to school and building those relationships. So she hit the ground running, and we could not be more thrilled or grateful.
Thank you for that. On Slide 5, can we go to Slide 5 real quick? The second bullet states 1,194 school of origin transportation requests were filled. I know a portion of the funds may be used to defray the excess cost of transportation to and from school of origin. Does this also include transportation for our student athletes or other students who participate in after-school activities?
So, after-school activities, the way we've been able to support is via gas card support, so if we had requests for any of that to come in, it is counted in that number, yes, sir.
Awesome, thank you for that. Next question, since absenteeism and housing stability are factors that are more controlled by the adults, could you speak to how we intensely work with our parents or guardians to help them become more stabilized for our students?
In terms of stabilized, do you mean support for them in terms of how they view education, or are you talking housing stability?
Stabilization individually, not the housing in this context.
Okay, so what we're trying to do is, as we kind of work to stabilize everything the student needs with bringing on Ms. Rockwell and also with Mr. Green and his position, we pride ourselves, pride is a really weird word because we don't really have it, but we focus ourselves on building relationships first, realizing that programs don't change lives, relationships do. So we really have very personal confidential conversations with our families to dig in and find out what really are those barriers? What are the deep factors that are keeping your student from going to school? What is it that you see as the value of education and why? And so we have, we have conversations with them, and we look to, to talk about plans and goals, both not just for our students, but what goes on in the home environment to be able to make education more of a priority and to be able to support the student attendance.
So I appreciate you specifying that because the relationships is what makes the difference because, again, if the guardian of parent does not have the sense of urgency or the necessity, then therefore it translates to the student as well. And by you saying what you said, everyone can do your job, that there has to be a certain level of empathy and understanding and communication with the families to do it. So thank you for specifying relationships and not just protocols or practices. We have a lot of community partnerships, but are they case management type of services that we provide directly to our parents, guardians? Do we have any case management-type services?
So we are building some relationships to be able to kind of send families out, refer families out. So Mr. Green works really hard to build those community resources and put those partnerships in place.
I appreciate that. So last, certainly not least, do we have a breakdown of identified students per school so we can get a better understanding of the needs of each schools or any patterns of concentration at certain schools?
Yes, sir, and I would be happy to share that with the board as a follow-up.
I appreciate it. Thanks again to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper, and great question about the identification and participation in, right? But it just strikes me that, you know, as you just said, "stable," and immediately I thought, "unstable," right? It, it can happen in an instant. So how do we identify and keep up with the need, right? Identify the need?
So for, for being like on top of identifying students and getting them connected?
Yes.
So, we have, we've done a lot of training this summer, right, with our different departments and different school staff personnel, because one of the best ways to address chronic absenteeism is to hit it before it starts. And sometimes if a student is having trouble getting to school, they've lost transportation because now they're living 20 miles away from their school of origin, they might be gone two or three weeks. So we've been out this summer speaking to our school personnel, saying, "This is kind of what you look for, this is upfront what you see," so that you can do early identification. "Call us early, call us often" is the motto that we've been spreading out to our school teams, and I think, I think we're getting somewhere. They're hearing us.
Thank you, thank you for sharing just that, that you're identifying it before it happens, right? That there are signs and perhaps symptoms before situations become unstable. And having attended pop-up event, I can't speak enough to the collaboration, communication, partnerships, really. From what I've seen, we, we truly, the team truly goes above and beyond the mandate and the requirements, and thank goodness you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. We look forward to hearing all about the grants, what, in October, Dr. Cashwell?
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again, and to the entire team for your incredible work. All right, the next items on the agenda relate to facilities and mechanical equipment and building operations, so before I present those items for your consideration, I just want to segue in with a, an update on recent air conditioning issues, how we're addressing those and our next steps. So, as you probably know, today is the first day the weather forecast has been what you'd expect for this time of year with high temperatures in the 80s. And for the last two weeks, of course, we've experienced record-breaking or near-record-breaking heat. But no matter the forecast, I want to emphasize comfortable, safe, working, and learning environments are a priority, and so today I can report that all significant AC issues have been resolved and our buildings are cool. Our facilities team works diligently and are up all night when needed to address ongoing or newly-reported issues as they arise. When temperatures soar, we may find ourselves with an increase in the number of maintenance requests, and as was the case recently with Gaten Elementary, the whole building was impacted, but in most cases, issues are contained to a small number of classes, office area, or a wing. But every one of those issues is being addressed as quickly as possible to bring relief for our students and staff. When assessing repairs, the facility team, of course, considers numbers of impacts, impacted individuals, the scope of the work, the availability of needed replacement equipment, and so on, when they're assigning technicians. So, short-term and long-term solutions are identified, vendors are hired to work in tandem with our own Henrico Schools' facilities team, and we continue to improve the communication between our principals and the operation teams to ensure that everyone's aware of those expected repair timelines. So, in the big picture, next steps, continuing to monitor our 500 HVAC systems, internal and external reviews of our protocols and best practices, and of course, coming in later months with our capital improvement plan, the presentation of HVAC replacements and other large projects, which often come forth in this portion of the agenda and represent ongoing work. So, that really segues into the next agenda item, which is a request for the board to award approval of a construction contract to Valley Boiler &amp; Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $68,500 for the replacement of boilers at Verina High School, and I'm asking the board, in addition to this request, to authorize me to execute a contract in a form approved by the county attorney and to execute change orders within the scope of the project not to exceed 15% of the original contract amount.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell, for the HVAC update that was much needed, and we're so happy, I believe I could speak on behalf of the board, we are so happy that most of the systems, right, are up and working, and if not, we know that our incredible operations team will be out there and addressing concerns immediately, if not sooner, right? Board members, since this is a Verina High School item, Ms. Atkins, will you please make the motion?
Hi, I recommend that the school board award a construction contract to Valley Boiler &amp; Mechanical Inc. and authorize the superintendent to execute a contract in a form approved by the county attorney and changes ordered within the scope of the project budget not to exceed 15% of the original contract amount.
Thank you so much. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, who wants it? All right, we, I'm going to go left, and Mrs. Shea, thank you for the second.
Ah.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
No problem.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the contract has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve the schematic designs for the replacement project, projects for Davis and Longan Elementary Schools. Before soliciting your approval, just wanted to provide very briefly an overview of the materials that have been provided to the board to review in advance of seeking that approval and, and take a brief look at those schematic designs and the work that went into creating them.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, Mrs. Chair, all of our board members, Dr. Cashwell. We are excited to bring you our schematic design for the rebuild projects of Davis and Longan Elementary Schools, and today I have with me from Mosley Architects, Stephen Halsey, who is a principal at Mosley Architects, and our project manager, Chris Brown. And I will turn the presentation over to them, and at the end, we'll be able to have any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Susan, Madam Chair, rest of the board, Dr. Cashwell. We're thrilled to be back here again. We always appreciate the opportunity to share great news about progress of projects that we're working with you all, and again, we're grateful for the continued relationship between our firm and Henrico County Public Schools. We've been spending the last three or four months working through the schematic design package that we have in front of you, working primarily through floor plan revisions and, and the site plan, and Chris Brown, our project manager, will walk you through the site plans for both Longan and Davis and the floor plans, and then I'll walk you through some preliminary exterior images at the end of the presentation, as well as some next steps in the project schedule, and then we'll be allowed to take any questions you all might have afterwards. So, Chris?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a brief agenda here, as Stephen mentioned. We're going to review quickly the site plans, go over the floor plans, some images, and then review the schedule. Beginning with the site plans, so we're going to start with Longan Elementary School. Longan and Davis are actually both similar floor plans. They're both campus-style facilities. Longan Elementary has a relatively sizable piece of land and open area that has a favorable grade to it. So we've identified the northwest corner of the site for a, for new construction. Shown here in the blue is our anticipated limits of construction. So it is anticipated for both of these projects, since they are same-site replacements, that school will continue its normal operation during construction. So the blue lines that you see there are our attempt at trying to contain the construction activities within the site. Overlayed on top of the existing site now is our anticipated building footprint in blue. You can see that it consists of two academic wings that spread out in order to envelope a courtyard space there in green. These two academic wings are two-story academic wings. And at the south down here, we have the new public entry piece. To the north, off of the northern side of the site where there are already existing openings and the existing track will have a new bus loop. So bus traffic will be contained on the northern side of the site and our public entry will be down to the south. The remaining portions of the existing school will be demolished in order to provide an opportunity for playfields. So in conjunction with our civil engineers, we took a look at what the site would look like prior to the existing site, our anticipated completion of the new school and the extended boundaries of the, of the new school while both facilities still exist, and then what our anticipated completed project looks like. So you can see to the north, the bus loop that I was referring to, and to the south, the both parent drop-off and public entry. We do have room for both playgrounds and blacktops throughout the site as well as another, another track. We also have reserved space up towards the northeast side for a field, for field day activities. And as I mentioned before, there's an opportunity for outdoor learning throughout the site, including in between the academic wings. So for Davis Elementary School, our site is a little bit longer. It is a little bit hillier, so we have a significant amount of grade. The high point on the site exists right around where the existing gym is, and then it drops off quite substantially to the west. We do realize that that western portion is the best candidate for the new construction. But unfortunately for this site, we will probably need to demolish part of, if not all, of the existing gymnasium, and we'll need to utilize some of the park, some of the blacktop play area. That is not all the play area that's currently on the site. Down to the south around here are where the current playgrounds exist, as well as some outdoor activity spaces. So again, in this overlay, we can see that the public entry is up towards the north, and we're going to bring the buses down even farther on the west side. Once again, our overlay of what the building will look like when both schools are constructed. And then the final site plan. So again, buses are coming in from the north, our public entry is on that east side with apparent drop-off. And here you see again opportunities for blacktop playgrounds, for soft playgrounds, and then a track farther down to the site. So with that, our floor plan, as I mentioned, this is a two-story school. Both the academic wings and the media center are two-story portions of the building. What we show representing here on that south side is our main entry. On the right side of that main entry is our, is our administration wing, excuse me. And in red opposite the hallway is both our guidance suite and our clinic. So this also provides an opportunity for direct access for, through the clinic in case students have emergencies that need to be picked up. They don't need to traverse through the entire school or through the administration. As we move down the central corridor, you're greeted with a learning stair that becomes again the hub of the school. I know those are utilized for activities, for group learning, and really start to become a community center for the school. So we're going to take advantage of that. And behind the learning stair, we have a library that is a closed library with opportunities for roll-up doors that may be opened to facilitate an open environment for other events or after-school activities. In purple across the corridor down here, we have both the art room and the music room. Those you can see are bound by that curved fence on the bottom. That, that illustrates an opportunity there for outdoor learning as well. So our gym and our cafeteria are the two spaces that are up in that north right-hand side. You see that purple space in between the two, that's our platform or our stage. It is a two-sided stage. It's intended to be able to be utilized from both sides. Its main feature stage is on that north side on the cafeteria. So each academic wing features a lot of extended learning area. This is accomplished by the angled corridors that you see there. Each academic wing is also anchored by a resource space that can be utilized for collaboration, for student teaching, and also for, excuse me, for pull-out spaces for learning. Don't want to skip over the fact too that we have a suite in here for special education, which also has access to that center courtyard. And upstairs, we have a continuation of the library in the green portion that's marked media center. That's an enclosed room that can be used for innovative learning, could be used for STEM activities, could be used for projects and collaborations. It's a really exciting space. It has lots of natural light and opportunities for students and teachers passing by to be able to view what's going on inside. Also, new to this, this design, we have exterior courtyards on the second floor of the building. Those are opportunities for what we see as the older grade levels, the fourth and fifth grade levels, to be able to conduct class outside. Those provide opportunities for learning through planters and being able to be in direct contact with the exterior and with nature.
Chris, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask, can you point to exactly what you were just talking about?
Yes.
That space right there, okay.
The purple space here and the purple space down here. Okay. Now, as I mentioned before, I show one floor plan. Both these schools, Longan and Davis, are based off of the same floor plan. Each of the schools will be individually tweaked minorly to fit the program, to fit the needs of each, each facility.
Just building on that, we've had extensive meetings with both principals, both Ms. Bonner and Ms. Henderson, to talk about specific program, or programs that are specific to each school. We know that a lot of what's driving elementary school education today are programs and services that are inserted into the school. And each community, each elementary school has its unique set of programs and services. So that's, that's going to be the primary differences between the two schools, identifying those programs and providing sufficient space for those programs and services to be delivered to our students. I'll just run through a few preliminary elementary, or preliminary exterior images. This is an image of the main entry. You can see there on the left, a substantial canopy for students arriving and being picked up before and after school. Now, large main entry canopy there, you can see lots of natural light, lots of glazing for passive supervision from, for administrators inside the school. Material palette that's very kind of natural in its feel, metal panels that are metal-colored stone and masonry colors or materials that are kind of indigenous to what you might find. And then some terracotta colored panels as well that might represent brick. Chris mentioned the outdoor learning space, opportunity that could be developed outside of the art room and the music room. This is an indication of what that space could be. So again, opportunities for students to learn outside, to take advantage of good weather outside in the community and to learn, to learn some of those programs in an exterior At the rear of the school, and as Chris mentioned, this would primarily be on those northern edges of each site respectively. The, the exterior bus canopy will lead you from the bus loop into the building. You can see on the right-hand side, the dining room component, again with lots of natural light and opportunities for some outdoor dining perhaps in a secure environment, and then those academic wings there on the left. So with that, we've got, we have a few bullet points for schedule and kind of where we're headed. With your approval today, we'll begin initiating the design development phase and we'll start to engage users and specialists and administrators at each school to start digging into how each space will be used, casework needs, technology needs, start talking about interior finishes, and working toward bid documents. We'll begin that phase in December. Timmons Group, our civil engineer is working right now on the preliminary site plan and those PODs, the middle drawings. So again, with your approval today, they'll really start ramping up that effort. We anticipate submitting to the county to begin the POD and site plan approval process early December, advertising the project in late February, early March, and then bidding an award over the March and April timeframe. Beginning construction at the first of May, we have started looking at perhaps a mid-year school opening in January of '26. And then once school opens in January, we'll complete the flipping of the site, the demolition of each school, existing school respectively, and then the conclusion of the site plan, the site work, and wrapping up each project in time for school to begin in August of '26. So that's where we are today. We'd gladly entertain any questions you all might have. And certainly appreciate your attention.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, Mr. Halsey, and Mr. Brown for this presentation. I know Ms. Ogborne and I, since the entire board, I'm sure, is excited as we all support Henrico Schools. But one of the schools, of course, is in Ms. Ogborne's district and another is in mine. So I'm going to start with Ms. Ogborne.
Thank you.
With questions and comments.
Ms. Moore, do you remember us sitting back all those years ago? Gosh, I think it's probably at least eight years ago when you showed me, yes, this school will fit on, a new school will fit on that location.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, fast forward and here we are, and I could not be happier. But I do have a ton of questions. And just Chris and Stephen, I appreciate y'all being here to, to help navigate through all of this. So what is the capacity of this new school? And I want to compare it to the capacity of the school that we have now.
So our target capacity is about 750 students.
Okay.
And our current capacity at these schools is a little over 500, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. I want to say it's around 525 or 535, somewhere in, in that vicinity. So we are increasing, by the nature of this being a rebuild, we are increasing the capacity of the school.
Which is, I'm sorry, Dr. Cashwell, did you, did you want to?
I was just letting her know to come closer to the mic so everyone can hear.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, which I am so excited to hear because we do have trailers at Jackson Davis. And one of the purposes of this rebuild is to rid ourselves of as many trailers as we can and, but also to relieve overcrowding because not only is Jackson Davis doing that, but Longan is doing that as well. So I'm affected, or the Three Chop district is affected by both, both of these buildings. Longan relieving Rivers Edge and Jackson Davis relieving hopefully Ridge, Three Chop, Skip with Thud Hole area. So actually, three of us are affected by this. But I just want to make sure that the capacity of these two new buildings will achieve the goals that we need them to achieve, is why I bring that up. Because the capacity is the reason we're doing it. And we had originally talked about adding possibly as many as eight to 10 classrooms at Jackson Davis. So is that the number that we're doing roughly based on the increase in size?
I believe it is. Right now, the floor plan that I showed indicates that there are about five per grade level right now with the additional space allocated towards ECSE and other programs for special education.
Right. Because I know Jackson Davis does have a, you know, a, not enough space for the programs that they have. So I'm glad to see that dedicated space for that program. And that was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, certainly there's additional capacity in both compared to the current, you know, by about 200 more.
Correct.
Students, you know, but we also want to look at what's reasonable for the size of an elementary school and the management. So I think this hits the sweet spot. It gives quite a bit more capacity at both sites, but it also isn't, you know, beyond what we'd call like a mega elementary school size. I think, you know, getting in that 700 range.
Right. And, you know, because we do have quite the problem, especially near Longan and what we've got at Rivers Edge. And, I mean, Rivers Edge, they're using every inch of space plus trailers. And so we're bursting at the seams in both places. And Jackson Davis has had trailers for so many years that, you know, they look like permanent structures now. But anyway, the fine arts area that you had in the auditorium, I love that double-sided stage. I don't know if you heard Mrs. Shea, that was, that's awesome. So I haven't seen that before. I take it that's a new concept. I think that's great. Talk about being flexible space. But the fine arts area, the auditorium stage area, are there, is that a traditional gym or is that going to be like a multi-purpose room type?
To the south, that gym's designed as an elementary school-sized gym.
Okay.
It's striped for basketball and it'll have basketball goals, it'll have the right height for basketball, but it'll really be treated as that basketball gym, multi-purpose space, really kind of catch-all.
And, and the fine arts area that I see is in the, the light purple. Is there a music room? Is that adjacent to it and that kind of thing?
Yeah, music is where the cursor is now, and then the art room is located just below that.
Okay. That's awesome.
And there'll be opportunities along that edge for student work to be presented and celebrated as you come in.
Because these are things that certainly Jackson Davis does not have now. I mean, this is ticking so many boxes of what is lacking at that school. First of all, this one won't be crumbling, so that will be the biggest thing in not having it outdoors. So this is a new design for Henrico. Is there anything close to this and, and that we have existing?
It's pretty similar in terms of some of the educational spaces. It's similar to Holiday. So Chris mentioned the, the learning stair that's located here in the middle, although it's, you know, it's in a kind of a, a little different orientation as you approach the stair from the main entry. But, and it's again similar to what we have at Tucker and Holland Springs at a high school level, but we do have this at Holiday.
Right.
And the extended learning areas is probably a little, a modest amount more of extended learning area in this particular building compared to Holiday. I think that the extended learning and collaborative areas are probably more appropriately sized for grade level, meaning there's probably fewer or less space at the lower grade levels, probably more space certainly upstairs in fourth and fifth for more team teaching and collaboration between fourth and fifth grade levels.
And so while you're there, if you don't mind looking at the second floor, the, the area that is not second story?
Yes.
So is that open to below or is that, what is that part? I mean, because when you look at the, you can tell from the front of the building that it's.
This area here is open to below, it's kind of a two-story main street that organizes the public spaces from the academic spaces. There, Chris mentioned that this, in this green block here, that is kind of the flexible innovative lab space. Again, project-based learning could happen there, STEAM, STEM activities could happen there. Right outside of that, at the top of the learning stair, this, this is more of a, more expansive collaborative area that will foster whether fourth or fifth grade is located top and bottom. In any event, fourth and fifth grades are planned to be upstairs, which could then take advantage of that connecting space for collaborative projects between those two grade levels.
So is the area at the end of that corridor upstairs, that's just kind of blank?
The white.
The, the white area?
Yes.
That I'm looking at. So that's.
Yeah, this is all roof, this, this is.
It's all roofed and it's, so you couldn't, I mean, I'm doing, what I'm just wondering is if in the future, you said, okay, this isn't big enough. I mean, is there room for expansion in this design? I'm just really curious.
So the expansion areas would be the infilling of these outdoor learning spaces. So they would be, they would be designed structurally, so in terms of floor loads, live loads, you would just, you could come in with a roof, add HVAC walls, and enclose each of these spaces for.
That's awesome.
An additional 50-student capacity.
That's awesome. All right. So specifically at Jackson Davis. That's awesome. All right. So specifically at Jackson Davis, if you don't mind going through the site plan, I'm curious because of the relatively new parking lot that we have at Jackson Davis, will we use that existing parking lot? Does it have to change in any way? Because I know we worked hard on getting that done.
Going to go back so we can see the existing one.
Right. Because it looks like to me it changes. It, yeah.
It does. There are some strategies that we need to put in place to take care of some of the civil challenges, like stormwater management.
Right.
Some of that is going to dictate how much impervious, impervious land we have. And since the site already slopes down in that direction, we've identified that as one of the better places to be able to keep as a green space.
Yeah, because it's just a shame that we can't reuse that parking lot because we spent a lot of money on it.
I agree. I will say too, it's also the farthest part on the site away from the front entry to sort of convenience.
And unfortunately, as much as we would like to try and salvage items like that, especially where we've invested money in those things, this site is the more challenging site because it's more rectilinear. It's not quite as forgiving as far as where you can place things. So unfortunately, that dictated the decision of how we had to lay things out. And it was explored as to whether or not we could salvage any of that parking lot work we had done previously. Unfortunately, it didn't lay out that way.
And the new school will go where the track is now, and so then the track will be relocated down. Anything at the school, Ben, is there anything we can, I take it, we can't reuse much of anything?
No, I will tell you, we will look at what we could possibly salvage from both of these schools to be used elsewhere, possibly in our sustainable building in the Verona-Wilton property site. But this being a vintage '60s building, there's going to be abatement, there's going to be materials that we don't necessarily want to bring forward into another school environment. But we are looking at that and looking at how we can be sustainable and reuse some of the material that we're pulling off of the old buildings.
Well, I mean, okay, so we'll move on. I'm just curious, how are we going to tell this community and the Longan community about what's coming?
We will have community meetings.
Okay.
So we will plan a community meeting. We will be glad to have meetings with the PTA and do a PTA-based meeting to give the school community an opportunity to see this. Obviously, we want to give the board the first look at what the game plan is.
Right.
And we are also, as we have done in the past, we are glad to have a community meeting where we invite the entire Jackson Davis or Longan community to come in and see what the schematic plans look like and provide comments.
And I would note, the principals have been involved in conversations to this point to date, and I know have been generally keeping their communities and PTA leadership up to date, but certainly the more formal launch would come through the broader community meetings. But our principals are prepared to assist with that.
I'll just put a plug in, if you don't mind, to keep board members informed as when those are, because we generally like to go to those. And what about planning with the staff, like we've done with other renovations? I know at Tuckahoe, I went to those. At Tucker, I went to those. I'm just curious, are we going to do that same process that we've done before?
We will, and we will also be bringing the specialists in and having the specialists provide input along with the school staff. We'll probably pare it down a little bit and look at like your department leaders. And I don't know that every single, that every single staff person would have an opportunity to comment when we have a school community meeting, but in light of trying to keep the process moving forward, as well as just trying to capture as the appropriate information we're trying to capture, we are looking at being selective and carefully deciding who will be included in that, in the direct input procedures of the design development.
And I would imagine for an elementary school, it's different than it was for a middle and a high. There are fewer departments and all of that to plan for. But staff does like to have input, especially, I mean, with signage and colors and all kinds of things, there are things to consider. How about security? For now, we have a new design, but we also have a new way of thinking as far as school security goes. So fewer entrances, obviously, this is going from a campus school style to an enclosed. But what about security for our perimeter?
We will look at that. I'll touch on one thing and then I'll turn it over to, back to Stephen and Chris to talk about what the security measures are. You're going to see some doors in that plan that are similar to what we have at the high schools as far as being able to cordon off certain areas and limit access in the school, through the school if there was a crisis situation. But we will also review these plans with our safety group and let them comment and look at anything that we need to tweak or adjust in the design to accommodate safety. And then I'll let these gentlemen explain a little bit more about the plan itself.
From a safety perspective, you know, the number of exterior exits are going to be dictated by code. So we typically do not provide additional exits outside of the building just for that safety and security protocol. You know, back in, I believe, 2019, the General Assembly passed legislation that all new school construction needed to have a review by a SEPTED-certified professional. We have two SEPTED-certified architects on our staff. So we'll be doing our own internal security review in conjunction with Susan and the rest of the Henrico team. A couple of security features, you know, the security vestibule upfront has been kind of standard protocol in terms of getting in and out of the building for a number of years now. As Susan mentioned, you can see entering each academic wing, we have a pair of security doors. Those are not fire doors. Those would be security doors. So similar to what we did at Tucker and Holland Springs, still have the ability within a button if there's a crisis situation to secure each academic wing. And then there are stair complexes and exterior doors that will allow students and teachers and staff, if an event is happening outside of those wings, for those students and staff and personnel to exit the building within, within that secure academic wing. As for the rest of the building, all of the major public spaces to the right side of Main Street all also have exterior doors. So while I maybe, as we, as we get into security and discussions, you know, there will be opportunities for easy access and easy egress from those spaces in the event there's a crisis situation without, without having to go back into the school to get out of the school.
Right. That's great. Because we do have a different lens that we look at these things through today. But speaking of that, single-sex bathrooms, are we doing bathrooms accessible to students various in the hallways? Or are we, being in elementary school, are we doing the traditional bathroom in the classroom thing, especially for the lower grades? Just curious.
So right now, we have bathrooms in individual classrooms. We do have two future classrooms that are dedicated for future pre-K when the pre-K programs might be coming to each location. And then at kindergarten and first grade, those, those classrooms have individual bathrooms.
Okay.
And then I think we have been looking at in terms of the group bathrooms for the older grade levels, having sink complexes that are not within each individual bathroom. So there's more monitoring in terms of sanitation. So as kids come out.
That's a great idea.
We'll have, we'll have those. So that, that will be something that is probably new to you all in terms of just evolving group restrooms.
Right. And that's what's going to be my point, because I think we need to, to look at where we're going. And we may as well just go ahead and design our buildings to fit the needs of our community. And, and I think that we'll, we'll begin to accomplish that. One last question, and that's about, we've had LEED-certified schools, we've had green space, et cetera. Will these be, what designations will we try to have? And solar and that kind of thing with the.
So we will design the roof systems to receive solar and PV panels. So in terms of roof load, that's become pretty standard practice for us, certainly with you all. Our goal is LEED silver. As you've seen, I don't know if you shared the news.
No.
Okay. Anyway, we won't, we won't share it yet. We, we have been, we've been able to exceed that on some schools, even though that's the goal. So LEED silver will be the, will be the goal for, for this project at a minimum.
I will say too, some of the white space that you mentioned earlier outside of the exterior classrooms, we have identified as potential locations for some of the PV arrays to be able to use them as learning opportunities as well. So we can include the building in some of the educational programs too.
Well, I can't tell you how excited I am. I mean, it's been such a long time that we've talked about this location and this community needing this, this boost. So I am very excited about it. The only thing I would ask is, Ms. Harris, if you could do me a favor, put in now for three years from now when this opens and invite me back for the opening. I would appreciate it because I'm going to be really excited that day that happens. I will put a plug in for, I personally, as a parent, been through a mid-year opening. It's very difficult. We opened Pocahontas in the middle of the school year. Now granted, that was moving from one building to another. This is shifting, you know, from one adjacent building. It's hard on the staff to, you know, not be in, to be in one place on Friday and Monday morning, we're in a new building. I don't know, I would assume being adjacent, it will be a lot easier, but it's just really hard on the staff. If there is any way to avoid a mid-year opening, I would hope we would do it. But if it, if it has to happen, it has to happen. It's just the timing of things.
A lot of it is the timing of things. In, in previous markets years ago, you could build a school of this size in 16 months. Post-COVID, again, continued labor shortages, supply chain issues, material shortages. It's just impossible right now. The flipside is that if we were to advertise next spring and give a contractor until August of 2026, then we built in too much time. So in terms of increased general conditions, increased kind of contractor costs, we would, we would end up probably seeing larger bid numbers than we would anticipate just because it's too much time. So there is a kind of a sweet spot in terms of the time that we give to contracting the community to build this. So we've got somewhere in the 20 to 22 months for this, 21 months.
But you don't see it happening in August of '25?
Unfortunately, not. That would be, that would be.
I would say not at this time, not unless we see some pretty significant market changes. We are seeing a little bit of change in the market, but not enough at this point that, that we would feel comfortable giving that kind of aggressive schedule.
Well, I'd rather you change the date and go, guess what, we're going to get it done early than to say, you know.
Yeah, we don't want to overpromise and underdeliver.
Exactly. But anyway, oh, thank y'all so much. I appreciate it. And I appreciate all y'all being patient with all my questions. So, and Tuckahoe's yet to come. So, anyway. So I'm done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Ogborne, for asking so many detailed questions.
I told you, I had three pages of questions.
I am appreciative, as are our colleagues. Do any other board members have questions about this project?
I got.
Okay, Mrs. Shay.
I mean, Ms. Ogborne, really, her retirement from the board, maybe she'll become an architect. She's got all the boxes checked. Yeah, she checked off almost everything. In terms of the mid-year move, it is challenging. I was at Freeman when we were middle renovation, and so mid-year, we moved from building to trailer 32, middle of the year, back to the building. And it's challenging, but, but we have procedures for that.
We have done it. Yes.
And so, anyway, only question I have, not specifically around the building, y'all did such a great job, gentlemen, but around the impact to instruction when we look at Jackson Davis specifically. So it said the gym and the playground are going to be kind of taken up in the construction area. Are those going to be out of commission the entire time we think that the main building's being built? Or will it be kind of like Tucker where it was like, okay, here goes building five. Couple months later, here goes building four.
I think there's something that we can work through with the contractor. So once, once a contractor is identified through the bid process, we can work with that successful little bidder in terms of how they see sequencing the project, in terms of material deliveries, when things are ordered. If it's the case where it makes sense for them to start in this particular image from the bottom, working from the bottom left to the upper right, then we'll be able to keep that gymnasium online longer, kind of like we did at Tucker. You know, we were able to keep some of those spaces. I think we grabbed, the gym went away before the auditorium did or vice versa. But I think that's to be determined just depending on when we get a contractor on board and what's the most efficient way of them getting through the project. They may have, Susan mentioned, they may have, they may be able to deliver the project sooner by getting the gym from day one. And we won't know that until we have some meaningful engagement with the, with the low bidder.
Great. Thank you so much for that clarity.
We will do everything we can to keep that online as long as possible.
Right. But we got to move the project along. So I hear what you're saying on it's a give or take. Thank you for the insight. That's all.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shay. Any other board members? I do have a question just about the design specific to Longan and how it's situated. Fortunately, we did have the land and we didn't have to acquire new land for either our project. Consultation with the neighbors. I know we're going to do community meetings, but I would hope that our leader has shared, because I know I've heard from community around Longan about the trees, et cetera. What specifically to that will be saved? Any, any trees?
So where the cursor is down at that southeast portion, we've been looking at saving the majority of those trees. I will say in the designs too, we're looking at enclosing the courtyard in here and creating some kind of memorial gardens through there too that will involve heavy planting as well. We've mentioned that a few times. But to the greatest extent that we can, everything that's down to the, to that southeast side, that entry should be saved.
Should be saved. And I know sometimes construction, right, damages some of our trees and so forth, but I know you guys will be careful. I was just wondering, because I couldn't tell specifically.
So if, if you can look here at the very bottom of the image and then right here where the cursor is, those two large kind of, you know, areas of trees, tree congestion. And then again, those corresponding areas on the proposed new site plan, there's a, there's a, we're planning for those to be saved.
Thank you for that. I mean, as a school, as a good neighbor for a community, the neighbors there have been good neighbors for our school, right? So, so thank you for that specifically. And then, of course, looking at the timeline of January 2026 and knowing that both of these are capacity projects, I just need to say to Dr. Cashwell, probably on behalf of the board, that that might mean some boundary adjustments. It's kind of a statement and a question.
Yeah, certainly, we're always looking at capacity across the district. And, you know, we talked about how many years it was when we even began thinking about these projects. And so certainly, some of our capacity looks different. We're continuing to monitor that. We'll keep the board up to date on current enrollment at both schools, getting rebuilt and in those neighboring areas. So if there are any boundary adjustments, we can begin thinking about those in advance. But certainly, both projects rise to the top in need based on facility condition first and foremost. I think you used the word crumbling with Jackson Davis. We, we know that the priority. And then, of course, making sure we're operating with some foresight to increase capacity so that as we may need to shift, we'll be able to have the space to do that. So we'll keep you up to date on enrollment trends, capacity, all of those things from now until we're getting close to that finish line.
Right. Thank you. I know that we, we review those ongoing and annually, but just wanted to highlight that since both of these schools are being built larger for capacity and programming reasons, right? So thank you very much. I'm very excited. Interestingly, my previous, previous experience with either renovations or remodels was like 18 to 24 months. So it's really, I mean, it's not that bad. A 20 to, you said 20 to 22 months?
For, for the construction of the new building. And then we'll have probably six to eight months once the building opens to demolish the existing building, complete the balance of the site work.
Okay. Thank y'all so much.
You're very welcome.
I couldn't be more excited to have these projects coming forward. And they're not delayed. So I'm very excited by that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, we have to vote.
Now, we actually have to seek approval or get approval. Board members, may I please have a motion?
You bet. Could you mind? I will move that the school board approve the schematic designs for the replacement projects for Davis and Longan elementary schools with excitement.
Thank you so much for that enthusiastic motion, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The schematic designs are approved.
All right. We'll.
All right, we look forward to staying up to date with developments on those projects. Next, I am seeking the school board's approval on the schematic design for the auditorium addition project at Tuckahoe Middle. And we'll have a brief overview of what that entails before, again, we formally seek approval.
Thank you again. And I was remiss, I'd like to identify Michelle Loveland, our project manager. Michelle, if you can just raise your hand. She's right behind Steve. I should have identified her earlier, but she is our project manager for the Longen and Davis project. And then, right now, we're going to give you our schematic design update on our Tuckahoe Middle School Auditorium Edition. This is a meals tax project, and we were very fortunate, as it is a meals tax project, we utilized our annual design contracts. And with me today is our Quinn Evans team, and that is Charles Tilly, our principal, and Ally Jarrett, our project manager. The first project is, of course, at Tuckahoe Middle School, and the game plan is we will take the auditorium layout that we create at Tuckahoe, possibly make some entry changes, and we will carry that forward to Brooklyn and Fairfield as we continue to look at those campus-style sites and their auditoriums. So with that, I will turn it over to Quinn Evans.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Delighted to be here this afternoon. Ally and I would like to share with you the schematic concept that we've been working on for the past three months at Tuckahoe Middle School. I'm going to talk a little bit about the overall site things, and then Ally's going to share with you the design ideas. Did you know the campus sits along Three Chop here? I don't know if you can see my cursor there. Three Chop's here on the left, the main road, the front entrance that faces Three Chop. When we did the master, when we did the renovation back in 2019, we created a master plan that identified a location for where an auditorium might be located, standalone auditorium. So it's campus-style, so we're, we're sticking with that idea. So the blue block here, we've identified as the project site. It's front of the site, you know, people can see it. Easy to find as parents are coming to events and those types of things. These are a few of the pictures of the existing campus. The top-left picture there is the front door of the school, looks out towards Three Chop. The two pictures on the top, center and right, are part of the campus updates that we did in 19 where we created this organic pathway connection system that created outdoor classroom spaces and ways to connect between the buildings that were not under the canopies. And so we're bringing that idea forward as a part of this project. The bottom left is, the bottom left and the center are the, sort of looking at the site as it stands today, where the building's going to be located. The center-bottom picture is, this, this is the main student path off the parent drop-off. As students arrive in the morning, they will come up this pathway, and then the auditorium will be just to the right of that. And then as you reach the top there, this third picture, or the, the third picture on the right on the bottom shows looking back towards Three Chop, and that will be sort of a small courtyard that's created between buildings three and four there. And so we see this project really as an inspiring place for performing arts for the students, but also a community center space for the community to share and have an actual dedicated auditorium, not a gymatorium. The picture on the left there is the existing site concept, and that yellow, those yellow draw, lines are that sort of organic pathway that we created throughout the campus. The blue block there is the existing site, or the, the proposed site. And then the idea on the right, the orange block is the, the auditorium, and we're using the auditorium shape because we're trying to be really efficient with our square footage, and working that around where the pathways, as the students enter the building in the, or enter the campus in the morning, coming by that auditorium as they enter to the school.
So here's the schematic floor plan for the new auditorium building. That maroon space represents the stage that is at the heart of the auditorium building, and it opens up to the pink area, which is the seating area. There will be 500 fixed seats and six spaces for wheelchairs. On the right-hand side of the seating space, there is an accessible path to the stage that will not require the use of steps for stage access from the seating space. The parking lot is in the lower left-hand side of the screen, and the majority of campus is at the upper right-hand side of the screen. So when we designed the main entrance, we were thinking about the approach of the community from the parking lot and also the approach of students from the campus side. So you can see that there in that blue vestibule. The lobby space will be a nice welcoming space. There'll be toilet rooms and drinking fountains off of that. And that will lead you into the seating area, which will have proper acoustic designs that the gymatorium currently is lacking. And the stage will have the infrastructure to support a middle-school-level auditorium. Backstage, there will be storage, utility space, and also a toilet. Here's a view of the relationship between that main entrance building and the new auditorium building. So you can see the design is the appropriate scale to fit within the existing campus context. Here's a view from the parking lot. The cladding material will be a brick that matches the existing brick on campus. And you can see there's ample canopy space and greenery. That face of the auditorium building is along the student drop-off and pickup lane, so that'll be a nice cover shaded area for students and gathering space for pre-function before auditorium events. Here's a view of that glassy inviting lobby area. There's that generous canopy that's at the main entrance, and that will serve to, you know, provide covered protection for a, of pre-function event. And that, including those horizontal sun shades that you see, will provide adequate shading for that lobby glazing. This is one sustainable strategy that we will be implementing for the project. We are pursuing LEED Silver certification for this project.
There we go.
Here's the student approach from campus. So you can see that strong connection with that organic courtyard pathway that Charles was describing. And then the entrance to the canopy and that, or with the canopy in that center space toward Three Chop. The tall walls of the auditorium here will kind of create a nice place for that courtyard, kind of surrounding walls. And they could be nice canvases for artwork or potential green walls, which we are showing in this view.
That's so awesome.
So here's a snapshot of the schedule. We are currently on track to complete construction documents in February of 2024. Bidding would be in the springtime, and anticipated construction would be June 2024 to fall of 2025. And we will leave you with this welcoming view of the auditorium design.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, Mr. Tilly, Ms. Jarrett. We really appreciate that schematic presentation for this auditorium. Board members, any questions or comments? And I'm going to go right to you, Mrs. Ogburn.
Thank you. You know I have them. I don't have as many as I did for the last one. But I am so excited about this. I mean, Mrs. Moore, you, you know, the, the history behind working on getting this done. I think it's been about eight, eight or nine years ago when the parents at Tuckahoe Middle School served everybody on the school board, everybody on the board of supervisors with that nice gift of, what was it, 300 or 400 signed petitions about getting the school done. And the first thing they wanted done was the auditorium. It's the last thing being done, that's okay. We're getting there. And so to, to see this drawing, that whole community is going to be so excited to have a space because it is a school that has so many musical programs within it that they've had, I've been to performances in the gym, and so this is going to be such a big improvement. So I keep on, you know, saying to myself, good things come to those who are very patient and are willing to wait. So, but I do have a question that came from a constituent, and that's capacity size and how this compares to our other middle schools, because this is only 500 students. It certainly won't seat the whole student body like you would expect a high school might. But I'm, I'm just curious about that first.
Yes, ma'am. So we looked at what our other middle school auditoriums had as far as capacity, and we matched capacity with this school.
Perfect. So I appreciate that. Yeah, because I, I know that that was a concern. Now, you said there are, there is storage, so that's storage for the band equipment and stuff. Classrooms added to this for music? I'm just curious, at all?
We did not add classrooms. So this project was about the auditorium directly. We do have storage in there, but we also had storage in the original renovation design.
Right, that's what I thought.
So the performing arts have some existing storage area already. And Quinn Evans was very mindful of creating accesses from different points, particularly to the right-hand side. Let me come over here. Oop, go back. Right over in this area, there will be a fenced area with a gate, so they would be able to bring props and stuff that they make in their current classroom area and get it back into the back of the auditorium area without too much difficulty.
That's great. And I really appreciate that. And now, are we including the staff with input on this design, just like we did the rest of, of Tuckahoe Middle?
Yes, ma'am. They worked very closely with the performing arts folks, as well as Chris Mosley, our specialist. They were all involved in the design iterations to get to this schematic. And I do want to introduce Adam Byfield. In the back is our project manager for the auditorium project.
Thank you so much. And just if you could recap, if you don't mind, Susan, the prep that went in, you mentioned it a little bit, Chris, that when Tuckahoe was renovated, this was planned for in the future. And so the space underneath, the important underworkings and the ground, because I remember talking about this a lot at the time, that we, just so if you could review, what went into the forethought of this and the location?
We identified, we identified a couple of locations. We felt like this was the most appropriate location because it gave quick access to the parking area. So for what kind of use an auditorium gets, we felt like this was the most appropriate. Just to the southwest, at the sidewalk line and into the parking area, is our underground stormwater retention system. So when we designed the renovation, we made sure we left that space clear of any kind of underground stormwater retention, any major piping. We do have a little bit that's alongside the existing cafeteria kitchen building, which that is that adjacent building on the right. But those were some of the preparations. We did not do any building pad prep, but we left the area alone.
Right, which I, you know, I think was great thinking ahead. And I would assume, since this is a, a sort of a blueprint for what will come at the other two middle schools, that preparation wasn't done. So is it possible that when we get to, it's Roff and Fairfield, correct?
Brooklyn, Brooklyn and Fairfield.
Brooklyn and Fairfield, there might be additional site prep that this location doesn't have.
That's correct.
So it's going to be a different cost, possibly.
And I will tell you, we, we went with the two family-style bathrooms on the front of this auditorium because we have group bathrooms very nearby within the classroom building. So we may have to look at the bathrooms a little bit differently. And, and we'll tackle that when we start to look at where the auditorium can be placed on the other sites.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogburn. Ms. Atkins?
I also just wanted to note some of the sustainability practices that I saw in your design, specifically when we're thinking about the green wall and what I hear from many students around, how they love their planet. And that particular design screams that we are listening to students as well. Outside of the need of an auditorium, I think as long as we are thinking futuristic, particularly the green wall, I absolutely love the, the glass entrance that we have, folks walking into it, and the natural sunlight, and really paying attention to some of the natural resources that we can utilize in very different ways. So kudos to you for this particular design. I really like the shape and really presentation and letting folks know and changing conditioning that it doesn't have to be a square or circle. That's very important for people to see. So in construction projects moving forward, thinking futuristic, perception is going to be grand on this because of the shape alone. So I, I am very impressed with this design.
Thank you very much. And I do, I'll let Charles speak, but I did want to indicate that Quinn Evans is being quite modest on the organic pathways and the landscape, the design that they did on Tuckahoe Middle School, because I do want to put out there, it is an award-winning landscape design that we're tying into, that they are tying into with their new design.
100% I noticed that. 100%. I, I am in love with the thought of being prepared for the future and honoring natural resources and bringing it into the classroom, as well as bringing students outside of it, because there's so many lessons to be learned. I will tell you what I've seen in response from students to green wall is amazing. All the ideas that spark and steam, especially in reading, reading, sitting on the floor beside a green wall, all these different things that I see from their faces, as well as the comments that they make. And, and some of this is just from me visiting the Brock Center, because they have some of this, and they really practice well sustainability. But I, I am absolutely in awe of this design, and I hope to see this in, in more of our schools.
Okay, board members, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, all right, now we're going to.
Sorry.
Oh, you do have one. All right, Mrs. Shea.
That was the arm of shame because.
All right, let's hear some questions or concerns or comments.
Again, Mrs. Ogburn really checked most of my boxes here. I just, I, I know the performing arts staff have shared how much they enjoyed working with y'all in preparing this and really making sure it checks all the boxes they need. So thank you for that and including them in that. I just want to make sure as we're revamping all of this, we're doing it right, as this administration has, has really been dedicated to for all of our recent construction projects. We're putting in like new soundboard, new lights. We're not recycling from the gymatorium.
No.
Okay, great. That is what I want to hear. I want to make sure that when we're, you know, we're doing it, let's do it right. Let's set our students up for success. Over 70% of Tuckahoe Middle students are involved in performing arts. So this is really going to be a flagship for this community. Thank you. Now I'm done.
Thank you.
Also, I do have one.
Okay, Mrs. Shea, one more.
So sorry. So sorry. This actually, Mr. Tilly takes you off the hook. And this is for Ms. Moore. So really excited about this project for Tuckahoe Middle School. However, real close nearby, there's another project brewing. And I was hoping, just in the context of this, you could share. I know there, there, for the, those listening, they are funded through different sources.
Correct.
This is funded through our meals tax, while the REQ that is brewing is going to be funded through our bond. But since they are neighboring projects, I want to make sure the public knows that all, all projects are moving forward. So can you just give us kind of broad, very broadly, what, what's the status with Quiacassan in terms of kind of planning? Where are we?
I will be glad to. So the RFP for Design Services, close y'all's ears, is out on the street. They are receiving proposals on September 29th. There was a pre-proposal meeting two days ago, and we have already got our selection of the, the selection committee, and they've been notified that they are part of the selection committee for our designers. Because this is a bond project and because it is a $90 million-plus project, we needed to do a request for proposal in order to determine who our design team will be. We have limitations on what we can do with our annual contract. So that's a big difference in the timeline between our auditorium project versus Quiacassan. We would anticipate that we'll do interviews for the shortlisted firms in October, with a contract award in November, and a start of design in November. So things are moving along very quickly with the Quiacassan rebuild project, or the REQ. I like that. We're going to have to use that.
I have to get, my husband came up with it. He would be very, he trademarked it. So he'd be very upset if I didn't give him credit.
We'll add the symbol.
We'll use it. I love it. I love it, the REQ. Thank you. Really exciting things happening for both schools in the area. And I appreciate the update on Quiacassan as we have the other bond projects and this neighboring. Excited about it all. Now I'm really, really done, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. I'm excited to hear the collaboration in the Shea household that you share, that you share your enthusiasm for these projects at work as well as at home. We're very excited. So now, finally, we get to approve the schematic design for this auditorium. Thank you very much for the presentation, by the way. Board members, may I please have a motion?
I'd be glad to. I move that the school board enthusiastically approve the schematic design for the auditorium project at Tuckahoe Middle School.
Thank you so much for the enthusiastic motion. Mrs. Ogburn, may I have a second?
Second.
There we go.
Thank you for your enthusiasm, Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. The schematic design is approved. Thank you so much for the items this afternoon, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on our agenda is public forum. Citizens had until 4:30 PM Wednesday, September 13th, to submit comments to the board for review using a link on the HCPS website. Citizens took advantage of that opportunity and we sincerely appreciate your input. Comments were compiled and provided to the board prior to the start of today's meeting. And those comments have also been placed in board docs. Board members, the next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Is there any? Hearing none. Item number 11.01 is new business. Board members, do we have any new business this afternoon? Hearing none. The last item on our agenda for the work session this afternoon is the announcement of meeting dates. Please note, the school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, September 28th, 2023, at 1 PM. And a monthly meeting will follow at 6:30 PM. Please note, the meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.